Chair, so we're ready?
This is upside down. We're live, we're good, Mr. Chairman.
Recording in progress.
Let's everybody stop, let her get her phone. The July 23rd, 2025 meeting of the Greenville County Planning Commission is hereby called to order. At today's meeting, we will review rezoning applications, subdivision applications, and other items brought to us by staff. Unless commission members have a question for the applicant, we will not accept additional public comment on the rezoning applications. The rezoning cases were presented at a public hearing, and that was the opportunity to hear public comments in favor of or in opposition to the rezoning cases. At today's meeting, the commission will be making its recommendation on the rezoning cases. Detailed information on each of the cases was provided to us in our electronic agenda package in advance of this meeting. Our recommendations will be forwarded to County Council's Planning and Development Committee for their consideration and decision. The subdivision matters we will review today have been reviewed by the Subdivision Advisory Committee. At that meeting, the reviewing agencies presented their preliminary findings to staff. Based upon the comments received at the Subdivision Advisory Committee meeting, and after a review of the applicable ordinance sections, staff has formulated contingencies for the preliminary plats. Anyone wishing to address the commission on subdivision matters should have signed up to speak. Again, you cannot address the commission during this meeting on rezoning request. The official public hearing on these cases has already been held. I'd like to welcome everybody today, and Mr. Parham is going to handle our invocation.
Our heads. Heavenly Father, I ask that you give us discernment and wisdom during this time, this evening, our meeting, that we make great decisions that are for not only developers and those who are asking for changes to the zoning, but also to the greater good of Greenville and all the citizens. I ask this in the name of Jesus, amen.
Amen. Thank you, sir. Minutes from last month. Any revisions? Can I get a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Alrighty. We've got Ms. Manning made the motion to approve. Ms. Phillips has the second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, rezoning.
Good afternoon. This is a brief explanation of the planning commission process to consider rezoning cases. Each docket will be presented, including the requested zoning, specific details of the site, as well as maps and photos of the site and surrounding area. Presentation will conclude with staff recommendation. Staff recommendation a result of feedback from a team of internal and external county stakeholders who review each case. After each presentation, the planning commission may either vote with or against staff's recommendation in order to offer any additional amendments to the... in addition to offering any additional amendments to the recommendation. All items forwarded from today's meeting will be heard by the Planning and Development Committee in person in the committee room in the North Building, which is scheduled for August 18th, 2025 at 5:00 p.m. The first docket is CZ-2025-045. Property is located at 10 East Main Street and Taylor's. The applicant is Chad Allen Coquette for revocable 10 East Main Street Taylor's Land Trust. The 0.32 acre subject property consists of one parcel and is located approximately 0.76 miles southwest of the intersection of East Main Street and St. Mark Road, and currently contains a vacant dwelling. This is the zoning of surrounding area. Subject property outlined here is Zoned R20 Single Family Residential District. The request is for OD Office District. You can also see the surrounding property zones. The applicant states that the proposed land use is a business office. This is the subject site and photo showing the area surrounding the subject site. Staff is of the opinion that a successful rezoning to OD Office District is consistent with the Plangrove County Comprehensive Plan designation of mixed-use corridor, which suggests commercial as primary use and is consistent with adjacent parcel zoning to the west. Based on these reasons, staff recommends approval of the requested rezoning to OD Office District. Mr. Chairman.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Baxley. I almost called you Bailey, just for fun. The commissioners, any questions for staff? Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion we approve. I recommend approval.
I'll second it.
Alright, Ms. Phillips has motion to approve. Ms. Manning has a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no. Alright, ADO, next one.
The next docket is CZ-2025-046. Property is located at 125 Terry Road and Fountain Inn. The applicant is Manuel R. Murillo and Anna Lilia Murillo. The 2.39 acre subject property consists of one parcel and is located approximately 0.46 miles south of the intersection of Terry Road and McKelvey Road, and currently contains single-family residential. This is the zoning of surrounding area. Subject property outlined here is Zoned RR3 Rural Residential District. The request is for RR1 Rural Residential District. You can also see the surrounding property zones. The applicant states that the proposed land use is single-family residential. This is the subject site and photo showing the area surrounding the subject site. Staff is of the opinion that a successful rezoning to RR1 Rural Residential District would not be consistent with the Plangrove County future land use designation of rural, which suggests a density of one dwelling per two-plus acres. Staff also feels this request would go against the relatively recent citizen-led initial zoning of this area in 2018. Based on these reasons, staff recommends denial of the requested rezoning to RR1 Rural Residential District. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Can I get a motion? Are there any comments or questions?
I'll have a motion to approve staff's recommendation.
I'll second it.
Alrighty, Ms. Manning made a motion to take staff's recommendation of denial. Mr. Wood has a second. Any further discussion? All in favor to deny say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Say no. ADO.
The next docket is CZ-2025-047. The property is located at 2056 Highway 418 and Burgess School Road in Pelzer. The applicant is Monty Craig Melanese and Teresa Ann Melanese. The 45.64 acre subject property consists of two parcels and is located approximately 0.53 miles northeast of the intersection of Augusta Road, Highway 25, and Highway 418, and currently contains single-family residential and vacant land. This is the zoning of the surrounding area. Subject property outlined here is Zoned RR3 Rural Residential District. The request is for RR1 Rural Residential District. You can also see the surrounding property zones. The applicant states that the proposed land use is single-family residential. This is the subject site and photo showing the area surrounding the subject site. Staff is of the opinion that the requested rezoning to RR1 Rural Residential District is consistent with the South Greenville Area Plan designation of rural preservation, which suggests one dwelling per acre and states that the most relevant zoning classification is the RR1 Rural Residential Zoning District. Based on these reasons, staff recommends approval of the requested rezoning to RR1 Rural Residential District. Mr. Chairman.
Alright, thanks, sir. Any questions for staff? Ms. Manning.
In reviewing this, it indicates the fact that current zoning allows 15 units. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And if we approve this change in zoning, that would allow then 45 units. Is that correct?
Yes, I'm up 245.
I don't understand why we do... you would ask for approval, this is a rural residential district.
So, staff's decision is due largely in part to the area plan. The comp plan is... the comp plan is actually a mix of both rural and rural village. So, under the rural classification of the comp plan, it would be one dwelling per two-plus acres. Under rural village of the comp plan, it is four to eight dwellings per acre. The parcel is kind of split there. The area plan is going to be more site-specific and be developed with the community. And that designation is what called, or well stated, that it felt RR1 would be an appropriate zoning for this area.
And I understand there's no sewer available and no water. Is that correct?
Correct. So, I will say that 45 units that's potentially listed under the RR1, it's highly unlikely they would ever actually be able to develop that many on the site.
Why do you think that?
So, partially, I mean, as you state, there are... you know, there's not the water, there's not sewer. Those could be limiting factors. Also, they have very limited road frontage for the site. So, unless they were to try and develop a new road up through the property, at which point, you know, they're potentially establishing a subdivision and coming back to you all for review.
Well, I'm still a little bit confused because it says here, "The future land use is rural and rural village." What exactly does that mean? What does that mean to the residents in this area?
So, those are going to be... under the rural designation, that's going to be larger lots, rural properties. So, larger lots, open space, some agricultural uses, and that would be one dwelling per two-plus acres.
But we're still opening up the option of them going 45-plus units. Is that correct?
Correct. If we look just at the comp plan designation of rural, then what they were asking for would not fit with that.
Well, there's got to be a reason that they want to change it from the current 15 units on three-acre lot size up to 45 units. And just assuming that the developer, whoever owns the property, is not going to go to 45 units, I don't know that that is something that we can assume. Can we?
Forty-five units?
No, half family. Remember, it's been homes on the carpet.
Wow.
Could you put the zoning map back up, please? Okay.
They can do it with R3.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Ms. Phillips, I'm sorry.
Can I ask staff a question?
Sure.
What was the difference in your decision based on this application and the last one? Was it the recommendations in the area plans?
It was. And I will say, for the last docket we looked at, that was a much more recent initial zoning, whereas this initial zoning was back in 2000, I believe. Whereas, the last docket was 2018, so much more recent. And we had recently also recommended denial on another property nearby where our last request was. So, we were trying to stay consistent with that area.
Do we know how wide Terry Road is?
Let's see.
A little bit better than a goat trail.
Paved over Farm Road?
I'm sorry?
Paved over Farm Road?
Pretty much, yeah. It's not good. Not a lot.
We... we don't have that answer yet.
I don't have it on hand.
Thank you.
Anymore?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I'll make a motion we deny.
Alright, can I get a second?
I'll second that motion.
Ms. Phillips made a motion to deny. Mr. Parham's got the second. Any further discussion? All in favor to deny, raise your hand. All those opposed? Alright, recommend the denial, seven to one.
The next docket is CZ-2025-048. Property is located at 145 Chapman Grove Road in Pelzer. The applicant is Jessica O'Gates and Michael A. Gates. The 10.68 acre subject property consists of one parcel and is located approximately 0.8 miles southwest of the intersection of Dunkland Bridge Road and McKelvey... McElvey Road, and currently contains a single-family residence and farm. This is the zoning of surrounding area. Subject property outlined here is Zoned RR3 Rural Residential District. The request is for AG Agricultural Preservation District. You can also see the surrounding property zones. The applicant states that the proposed land use is agritourism and a farm stand. This is the subject site and photo showing the area surrounding the subject site. Staff is of the opinion that a successful rezoning to AG Agricultural Preservation District would be consistent with the Plangrove County Comprehensive Plan designation of rural, which lists greenhouses, nurseries, and agriculture as primary uses. Staff also feels this would not have an adverse impact on surrounding area. Based on these reasons, staff recommends approval of the requested rezoning to AG Agricultural Preservation District. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Baxley. I got a quick question. Is this the same thing as agricultural business, or whatever that other category is?
Which designation are you referring to?
Agri... okay, agritourism, I guess. Is that different than this? I mean, to me, it's just ag.
Correct. So, at the moment, there is a working... I believe they have a existing tree and shrub farm, maybe, some sort of plant farm out there. And then they also have... they're starting a flower farm, based on what they've said they're doing currently. As a new part of their business, they want people to be able to come to the site, maybe have a farm stand, or have people come and do a pick-your-own flower sales type of business.
Right now, it's just a wholesale.
Yeah.
Right. Under the current business, they can do wholesale, you know, they can do shipping, they just can't have people coming to the site.
Alright, thank you, sir. Any other questions for staff? Or a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve.
I'll second.
Mr. Wood made a motion to approve. Ms. Phillips has the second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no.
Next docket is CZ-2025-049. The property is located at 12 Car Road and Clearview Drive in Piedmont. The applicant is Eric Christian Baldwin of Christopher Homes for Thomas Milford Riddle and Douglas Dean Riddle Jr. The 13.83 acre subject property consists of one parcel and is located approximately 0.55 miles southeast of the intersection of Blakely Avenue and Augusta Road, Highway 25 South, and currently contains agricultural and vacant land. This is the zoning of the surrounding area. Subject property outlined here is Zoned RS Residential Suburban District. The request is for R15 Single Family Residential District. You can also see the surrounding property zones. The applicant states that the proposed land use is single-family residential. This is the subject site and photo showing the area surrounding the subject site. Staff is of the opinion that a successful rezoning to R15 Single Family Residential District would be consistent with the South Greenville Area future land use designation of traditional residential. There's also similar existing R15 zoning nearby on Car Road. Based on these reasons, staff recommends approval of the requested rezoning to R15 Single Family Residential District. Mr. Chairman.
Commissioners, any questions? Comments? Motions? Oh, well.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes?
In the public hearing, the owner, I believe, said that they planned to put in septic rather than sewer.
Right.
I realize that's not the deciding hinge on which this turns, but I find that a little bit uncomfortable, given the nature of the land, given the fact there's a stream that runs right through it. So, I'm leaning against it for that reason.
Okay. Ms. Manning.
The other concern that I have, it currently is zoned for 23 units. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And they're requesting zoning for R15 Single Family Residential District, 40 units. Is that correct?
Correct.
And they think that the septic will handle all of that, despite the fact, I agree with Ken, that you've got a stream right in the middle of all of that. Is the staff not concerned about that?
So, under the new repair and buffer requirements of the LDR, they would have the new larger stream buffer. I'm not sure if that would be 50 or 100. I believe the civil engineers might still be discussing that. But that is going to be a limiting factor on their side.
But it does allow, if we do this change in requested zoning, it will allow 17 more units than allowed under the current zoning. Is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff?
Did he not say in the... in his presentation that he was planning to construct 20 units?
Yeah.
Due to the stream going through the middle of the site, that is going to limit their development options. It's... yeah, according to the applicant's testimony, they were planning 20 or less.
Ms. Manning.
Then I'm a little confused. If they're saying at this point right now that they're going to do 20 units or fewer, the current zoning would allow 23 units. Isn't that correct?
It would if you take the entire site into consideration, which they wouldn't be able to develop the entire site. R15 would allow them to potentially have smaller lot sizes, which would allow them to fit more homes along the car side road, or well, elsewhere on the site, I should say.
And I'm assuming that the large white building that's on the left-hand side, that's what, some sort of a warehouse of some sort? What is that?
It is. It's a large industrial building.
Thank you.
I guess we can bring up the fact that I'm not sure you can put septic on a 15,000-square-foot lot, but that's for them to figure out.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
And I would agree with your comment. We're not environmental engineers. None of us work for DES. You've got an Asuzu 1 million square foot assembly plant that borders this property. You've got industrial zoning that's within about a wedge shot of the other side of it. They're not going to be able to do 43 homes on here. But I would concur with staff's recommendation on... recommend an approval and let our friends at DES figure out how many homes and septic tanks and get on the property and like to make a motion that the application be approved.
Alright, can I get a second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Hammond made a motion to approve. Mr. Wood has the second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no.
No.
Alright, let's go back to the arm-raising thing. All votes who vote to approve. Alright, those who wish to deny. Okay. We got a tie, and in my interpretation, it's... the motion has failed in a tie vote of 4-4, so it's recommended to deny. Next docket, please.
The next docket is CZ-2025-050. The property is located on Agnew Road and Richards Avenue in Greenville. The applicant is Jonathan Net of Civil SD LLC for Las Cruces Investments LLC. The 12.45 acre subject property consists of one parcel and is located approximately 0.8 miles north of the intersection of White Horse Road, Highway 25, and West Blue Ridge Drive, Highway 253. Currently contains vacant land. This is the zoning of the surrounding area. Subject property outlined here is Zoned RMHP Residential Manufactured Home Park District. The request is for R6 Single Family Residential District. You can also see the surrounding property zones. The applicant states that the proposed land use is single-family residential. This is the subject site and photo showing the area surrounding the subject site. Staff is of the opinion that a successful rezoning to R6 Single Family Residential District would be consistent with the Plangrove County Comprehensive Plan future land use designation of traditional neighborhood, and would not have an adverse impact on the surrounding area. Based on these reasons, staff recommends approval of the requested rezoning to R6 Single Family Residential District. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Can I get a motion or any questions?
I'll do a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Ms. Manning has a motion to approve. Ms. Phillips has a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no.
Next docket is CZ-2025-051. Property is located at 3019, 3021, 3035, and 3085 Highway 14 in Greer. The applicant is now Lynn Solzby of Blue Water Civil Design LLC for Highway 14 Cars LLC and AGW 3085 Holdings LLC. The 13.67 acre subject property consists of three parcels and is located approximately 0.21 miles northeast of the interchange at Batesville and Pelham Road and Highway 14. It currently contains single-family residential and vacant land. This is the zoning of the surrounding area. Subject property outlined here is Zoned RS Suburban Res... Suburban Residential District. The request is for S1 Services District. You can also see the surrounding property zones. The applicant states that the proposed land use is private recreation with automotive storage. This is the subject site and photo showing the area surrounding the subject site. Staff is of the opinion that a successful rezoning to S1 Services District would be consistent with the Plangrove County Comprehensive Plan future land use designation of mixed employment center and be consistent with similar commercial zoning in the area. Based on these reasons, staff recommends approval of the requested rezoning to S1 Services District. Mr. Chairman.
Alrighty, I got a quick question. Can you do mechanical work in S1?
You can.
Okay. Any other questions?
I got a few.
Yeah, you do, Ms. Phillips.
Did staff take into consideration the topography of this site and the location near the river?
We did. So, we are aware that behind the site, it's covered up by the city of Greer boundary, but on the other side of the entry, we are aware that there's some residential. But I guess from our standpoint, the topography and that hard boundary of the river, we looked at that as, you know... well, as a hard boundary for any potential commercial development, to prevent it from encroaching further on the residential behind it, while keeping commercial uses along that Highway 14.
Understandable. I was looking at the S1 allowed uses, and they vary from something I might be able to have in my home to... I did one explanation on a couple of them. So, the auto storage, wrecked or damaged, is that... I mean, that's junkyards, scrap yards?
It is.
Yeah, it is, but it's limited to the... to short-term hous... not housing, but short-term keeping of those vehicles. Zoning orders doesn't necessarily say what short-term is, but it is... if it is long-term, it falls into junkyards and has to adhere to the junkyard ordinance at that point.
And how is that overseen?
Really, if they're... if the cars are just there and quickly overturned, you know, they're there for a few days, a week or something, and then, you know, it's kind of like held for auction or held, you know, for insurance purposes or things like that if there's a wreck. We kind of lead that into the auto storage, but if they're... if you... if they're starting to get to where grass is growing up around it and, you know, it's triggering the regulations and the stipulations in the junkyard ordinance, then we're going to say, no, that is a junkyard, and it'll have to adhere to those sections. So, it would be a violation of being auto storage at that point.
But unfortunately, we only act on a complaint base. Correct? Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
I have a question.
Yes, Mr. Parham.
So, I thought maybe there was going to be some discussion on any special... because it is a river there, and you're storing vehicles, and it sounds like maybe some mechanical work being done on them. Are there any kind of land use issues around service and oil being stored and that kind of thing?
So, that wouldn't fall within the purview of zoning administration so much. If there are site-specific requirements, you know, grading requirements or stormwater treatment requirements, that would be up to their civil engineer to work out during the development phase.
Okay.
And would work with DES as well on any kind of, you know, runoff from any, you know, automobile fluids or anything like that.
Okay. Are there other... well, let me back up. I'm looking at all the uses that are allowed, and one is for S1 zoning. One is adult entertainment, sexual-oriented businesses. I think one of these things that... I think one of these things is fairgrounds. Is there a different zoning designation that would allow this business to go in besides S1?
I'll answer the first part of that question. So, if you look at the adult-oriented business, that actually, there's, there's conditions and we have a separate ordinance for that that regulates those type businesses. They would not be able to go at this location. They're too close to residential pro, zoned or used properties. So, that, that is not a use that would, even though it might be in the table, there's specific location restrictions that would prevent it from.
An additional list in some places.
Exactly, exactly.
Conditions.
Yeah, and as far as the second part of the question, you know, we, we, we batted this around for quite some time as to what, you know, where this is going to fall, and the fact that some of the activity is going to be in that higher intensity, I think that's why we landed on the S1, because while it might be, oh, some of the, some of the activity might be okay in a lesser zoning district, some of the activity is throwing it into that S1, and we're having to kind of look at it in that, with that lens.
So, just if it was like RV storage, there's some, there's a different zone that it could use for something like that, similar to like boat, RV storage?
Boat and RV storage would still require at least S1. So, S1 is the least intensive zoning district. That would allow them to do what they're trying to do. I mean, they could potentially do it in I-1, but then that allows for even more intensive uses.
Okay, thank you.
FRD seems appropriate here.
I agree.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Hammond.
Comment, you're, you're across from S1 and I-1. You're adjacent to I-1 on the western side. Highway 14, I'm not sure what the traffic count there is. I imagine somewhere 20, 25,000 vehicles per day. RS certainly isn't the zoning for this site. You've got contiguous or across street contiguous S1 and I-1. There was no one in opposition at the public hearing. Staff recommends approval based on it being consistent with the comprehensive plan. We should not take topography nor other environmental conditions into consideration, in my opinion, on rezone recommendations. I'd like to make a motion to approve the application.
All righty, Mr. Hammond, can I get a second? Apparently, I can't. All right, Mr. Hammond made a motion to approve based on staff's recommendation. Is there a second anywhere?
I'm still torn on it myself on all that due to some, just.
Well, Mr.
Just.
Mr. Hammond's correct. We're not supposed to consider all this. I, or the fact that the sewer processing plant across the street.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a second.
All right. Ms. Franklin has a second. Any further discussion?
As a point of information, the traffic count is 14,500.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor to approve, raise your hand. Oh goodness. All those that are in denial. Opposed. All right. Our new bylaws stipulate we don't do no recommendation anymore, even though Mr. Fant loves it. So, the motion to approve fails again, and it is denied.
The next docket is CZ-2025-052. The property is located at 395 Conisty Road, Second Avenue, and Third Street in Greenville. The applicant is San Cap Modi for Modi 87, Inc. The 0.5 acre subject property consists of a portion of one parcel and is located approximately 0.54 miles east of the roundabout interchange of Forkshores Road and Conisty Road. It currently contains a self-service laundromat and gas station with retail. This is zoning of the surrounding area. Subject property outlined here is Zoned C1 Commercial District and RMA Multi-Family Residential District. The request is for C2 Commercial District. You can also see the surrounding property zones. The applicant states that the proposed land use is retail with ABC liquor sales. This is subject site and photo showing the area surrounding the subject site. Staff is of the opinion that a successful rezoning to C2 Commercial District would be consistent with the Conisty Community Future, Conisty Community Plan, future land use designation of Mill Village Commercial, and would eliminate the split zoning of the parcel by matching the existing C2 designation on the rest of the site. Based on these reasons, staff recommends approval of the requested rezoning to C2 Commercial District. Mr. Chairman?
All right, thank you, Mr. Vaxley. Commissioners, can we all vote on something? Can I get a motion?
May I ask a question first?
Sure.
To staff. The applicant stated in the public hearing that this was going to be for the purpose of allowing liquor sales. Is C2 the least restrictive zoning designation that would allow that, or is there, sort of like similar question was asked a moment ago?
It is, it is the only.
The only one, okay. Just checking. Thank you.
I'm making a motion to approve.
All right, Mr. Wood, thank you. Can I get a second? Ms. Franklin has the second. Oh goodness, here we go again. All those in favor to approve, raise your hand. All those who'd like to deny in opposition, raise your hand. It is denied 5 to 3.
The last rezoning docket tonight is CZ-2025-053, which is to amend Article 4 Definitions, Article 6, Table 6.1, uses permitted, uses by special exception and conditional uses, and Article 8, Section 8.5, ESDPM Environmentally Sensitive District, Paris Mountain of the Greenville County Zoning Ordinance. This is amendment to several sections of the ordinance. So, shown in red is a proposed change to the current wording of Section 8.5.1 Intent. The current wording, shown in, the current wording is shown in red and struck through. Here we see uses specified in Table 6.1, which are currently allowed in the ESDPM zoning classification. These will be removed from being allowed in that district. We also see a change to Section 8.5.3, which would create new dimensional standards table for the district. Shown in red, struck through, is the current language of Section 8.5.5 Density. The amendment would remove density based on transfer of development rights and set a limit of one unit per acre. A new Section 8.5.10 Tree Save and Tree Preservation is proposed, which would place restrictions on clearing of trees on properties. Another new section, Section 8.5.11, would place new requirements on site lighting. A third new section is proposed, 8.5.12 Short-Term Rentals, which would place restrictions on short-term rentals and guest parking. Then shown in red and struck through is the current language of Section 8.5.9 Transfer of Development Rights. The proposed amendment renames the section to Special Provisions and would remove the use of TDRs and create a buffer area for certain properties. And then lastly, there would be new definitions proposed to be added to Article 4 Definitions. This is the aerial image of the ESDPM boundary. Here's the zoning of the EDM, or Paris Mountain Special Land Use Area and surrounding properties. Staff is of the opinion that proposed text amendments as currently presented would create contradictions with other, other county regulations currently in effect in the zoning ordinance, land development regulations, and tree ordinance, which would cause complications with their enforcement. Additionally, some of the proposed regulation changes would be difficult for county zoning staff to administer or enforce. A change such as the regulation of short-term rentals would necessitate the adoption of new processes and/or permits, while other restrictions such as parking on road shoulders may not fall within the purview of zoning administration. Based on these reasons, staff recommends denial of the proposed text amendment. Mr. Chairman?
All righty.
Mr. Chairman, may I make a motion?
Sure.
I motion that we deny the application.
All righty. Can I get a second?
I'll make a second.
Mr. Wood has a second. Any further discussion? Now's your chance. Yes, Ms. Phillips?
I think we'd all agree there are some good things in this amendment, but I was going to ask you all some of the same similar questions, and I would like to maybe see this reviewed again and revised.
So, I will add that staff, we have had some additional communication with the, the community folks responsible for bringing this amendment forward, and we are working to, you know, work through these items.
I'm sure. All righty. The motion is to deny. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. All righty. That endeth the rezonings. Give us a few minutes to set up for subdivision.
Whenever you're ready.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is PP 2025-106 Owens Glen, previously approved as PP 2024-109. Owens Glen is a rural conservation subdivision located southwest of the intersection of Highway 25 and Bessie Road, which are both state roads. The applicant is requesting 286 lots on 112.29 acres for density of 2.55 units per acre. Access is provided off of North Flat Rock Road and Owens Road, both of which are county roads. The application was previously approved in August of 2024 under application number PP 2024-109 for 288 lots on 121 acres. Here is the, the site outlined in red, and here is Owens Road looking northeast and looking southwest. Here is North Flat Rock Road looking northeast as well as southwest. Here is the site plan that was submitted in your packet. Sorry about that, oh, I'm missing my notes. There are three access points here as well as, I believe, six internal roads. There is a pool amenity shown as well as two CBU locations with added parking, and additionally, a playground shown on site. There is also an overhead power line shown running through the site. The difference between this plan and the previously approved plan is that, number one, the GIS boundaries were originally used. The, the state plan coordinates have been used for survey since then. That's why the acreage went down. In addition to, on the upper left-hand side of the site, the, there was acreage removed. That, that area is inaccessible to the rest of the subdivision due to the wetlands that are on, on the site. Also, an overhead power line easement is better shown on this property in that, that acreage is taken out in some areas. The site is unzoned and part of the Greenville County Comprehensive Plan, where it is designated as rural living, which recommends a density of one dwelling unit per two or more acres, and a part of the Piedmont Community Plan, where it is designated as, I believe, rural. My notes are, I'm, I'm so sorry, my notes are messed up, so I don't. That's right, and so the natural land conservation is, I think, one unit per every two-plus acres, and then the rural is, I think, two units per acre. I could be wrong about that, because my notes are messed up. I'm sorry. The site is additionally part of the South Greenville Area Plan as well. I'll come back to that. I'm going to finish the rest of the presentation, but I think Josh is going to get us the densities, since my notes decided to disappear. Here is the site and areas around the site. For SAC, from Greenville County Roads and Bridges, they recommend left turn lanes on Owens Road. From Greenville County Flood Plane Administration, the notice to provide information on how the roadway will cross the floodplain area, specify whether a bridge or culvert will be constructed, must provide proof that it will not impact the floodplain. If a culvert will be used, then the lowest point, the top surface of the culvert, must be at or above the base flood elevation. The base flood elevation will need to be, need to be determined. This will be addressed at the permitting phase, assuming that it would be approved. And then from REWA, REWA provided a preliminary capacity approval for 291 lots. The connection point requires REWA board approval to grant an easement. The connection manhole is blocked and will require replacement with a precast manhole. REWA's bypass specifications will need to be followed. Staff recommends approval with conditions of the plan with, and variance request, or excuse me, of the plan with the standard and specific requirements. The conditions of approval are as follows. One, please provide the confirmation from Greenville County Flood Plane Management that the correct panel number is shown on the preliminary plan. If necessary, please provide a revised preliminary plan with the correct panel nose, number. Two, provide left turn lanes on Owens Road. Three, traffic improvements warranted as a result of the traffic impact study must be installed once 40 lots have been recorded. And four, provide appropriate notice of approval of connection point for sewer from REWA prior to approval of a final plat. Mr. Chairman? Well, actually, just one moment. Yeah, okay. So, going back to this, the subject site is part of the Greenville County Comprehensive Plan, where it is designated as rural living. The rural living character area type recommends a density of one dwelling per every two-plus acres. It is also part of the Piedmont Community Plan, where it is designated as rural and natural land conservation. The rural district recommends a density of zero to one dwelling units per two acres, and the natural land conservation recommends a density of zero to one dwelling units per two acres. It's additionally part of the South Greenville Con, Area Plan, where it is designated as transitional residential. This is a two to three dwelling units per acre. Again, 2.55 dwelling units is what's being proposed at this point. Apologies for that.
Thank you, Ms. Staten. We have folks signed up in opposition and in favor, so each side gets a total of 10 minutes. You can take it all or take parts of it. And our first speaker in opposition is Amy McCord. You would name and address, please, for the record?
Yes. Good afternoon. My name is Amy McCord. My address is 380 Owens Road, and that's in Piedmont. May I provide the chairman with a copy of our petition?
Sure.
I represent many concerned residents of the Piedmont community, and I am here today with a printed copy of a petition signed by over 900 citizens asking you, the planning commission, to deny approval of the Owens Glen preliminary plan. Let me begin by addressing a critical point. This application is not a continuation of previously approved file number 2024-109. Despite what has been suggested, this is a new application, a new plan, a new application number, new acreage, a new sewer easement proposal, and a higher housing density. The developer submitted this new plan to SAC in May for review in their June meeting. In the June meeting, SAC did not treat this as a new submission, and it was given about a one-minute review where it was approved and sent back to you under the previously approved. and sent back to you under the previously approved quotation marks. But again, it is a new plan. Per Section 3.3 of Greenville County's Land Development Regulations, this project qualifies as a major subdivision under a new preliminary plan, and it should be reviewed as such, starting from scratch. One question that I have in particular for the SAC is, it seems to be very misleading to me that the plan states a housing density of 2.55 homes per acre because this is based on gross acreage. When you remove the open and green spaces, there are approximately 75 net buildable acres for these 286 homes, which puts the density at 3.8 homes per acre in what look like quarter-acre homestead lots or home sites. This density far exceeds the one unit per two acres as recommended for the rural areas in the Greenville County Comprehensive Plan, which was adopted in 2020, and the Piedmont Area Plan, which was adopted in 2024. I have been unable to find any details on the South Greenville Plan. I'm not sure when it was adopted or what year was it enacted.
Sure, you can answer.
It's on our county website, under the area plans. If you go to Greenville County Planning and go to, there's a menu board with the area plans. I think it's a 2016 or 2017 plan, 2017. So it was worked on with the community in 2016 and then adopted in 2017.
Okay. So it should have been trumped by the Greenville County Comprehensive Plan, which was adopted in 2020.
Typically, the area plans override the comp plan.
Okay. Both the Greenville County Comprehensive Plan and the Piedmont Area Plans aim to preserve the rural character, allow for common sense growth and development, and avoid over-intensified developments like this one in rural areas. I would like, I think you just answered my question. I wanted the SAC to comment on record why the housing density was approved based on the North Greenville Plan and not the Comprehensive Plan. And I think, Mr. Chairman, you just answered that question. However, now that this is a new application, we also have the Piedmont Area Plan, which is new. It was adopted in December of 2024. I would also like the SAC to go on comment why the housing density is calculated on the gross buildable area and not the net buildable area.
We're spending your time, which you only get so much. Would you like for them to answer?
Yes.
Okay.
So currently, all applications for development are based on gross acreage. So any subdivision application that comes in, they use the gross acreage, so the acreage for the entire site, as what the density gets calculated off of. There's been discussions to change that. But as of right now, that's how it's done.
Just seems to be in conflict with the plans, which specify one house per two acres versus, when you look at this plan, it's saying 2.55 houses per acre. But if you dig deeper, there's only 75 buildable acres. So you're putting basically four houses per acre, just a comment. State law backs the planning commission's authority to take these concerns seriously. South Carolina Code 63170 says a development agreement and authorized development must be consistent with the local government's comprehensive plan and land development regulations. Furthermore, the 1994 South Carolina Planning and Enabling Act gives this commission the authority to determine whether a proposed development is compatible with the surrounding community. Lastly, I submitted an email yesterday to each of you with photographs and safety concerns about Owens Road and Flat Rock Roads. Both are narrow, shoulderless roads with sharp curves and limited visibility. These routes are not currently included in the five- or 10-year road improvement plan as we heard in the PC meeting notes in August of 2024. And yet, the subdivision would add over 700 residents and associated traffic. These roads are not fit for safe travel or an evacuation if necessary. Flat Rock Road has an area that is only 15'6" wide in asphalt, as you can see in the pictures I've provided, which I've given to staff here. It's not going to hold up to that traffic. No department has taken ownership or formally addressed the safety concerns. Under South Carolina Code 6291120, the planning commission is statutorily obligated to ensure that new development does not burden the community with inadequate infrastructure. This duty does not end at the subdivision entrance. It includes the entire road network that serves the development and affects the surrounding community. We're not asking you to fix the roads. We're simply asking you to withhold approval of this development that relies on roads that are demonstratably unsafe and unfit for the additional traffic and emergency response demand. Any comments or questions on the roads?
Any questions for the speaker? Thank you, ma'am. Mark Yost. How much time we got?
Four minutes and 70 seconds.
Really? All right, talk quick.
Mark Yost, I live at 9 Cimarron Circle, Pelzer. I would like to thank the powers that be for giving the opposition a chance to voice our concerns again as this is a major change to the proposal and not a minor one. From the research I've done, there are three aspects I'd like to bring to light. First and foremost is the safety of the roads as it applies to the entrances and exits on Owens Road and the traffic of heavy trucks going to and from the recycling center. The engineer has clear sight distance of 335 feet as defined it must meet as a minimum in the LDRs. But honestly speaking, as someone who drives Owens Road regularly, that's not enough. You can't see these tractor trailers until they're right on top of you, especially where these entrances and exits are proposed. There is simply too much vegetation and trees on the side of the roads, or there are blind curves. Furthermore, the safety aspect only worsens when you consider the weight of an unloaded 53-foot tractor trailer or straight truck is approximately 34,000 pounds. A normal-sized car is around 4,000 pounds. Take into account that these trucks travel this road in low light conditions in the early morning, and you've got a recipe for disaster. I would suggest that if approved, Owens Road be widened at the subdivision at the expense of the developer. Number two, South Carolina law states under Title 6291120, line item 5, "to assure in general the wise and timely development of new areas and redevelopment of previously developed areas in harmony with the comprehensive plans in municipalities and counties." To my knowledge, the county council voted and approved the comprehensive plan in its entirety. This includes the future land use element, which has the property at one dwelling per two acres, which the newly approved Piedmont Plan only echoes. So the question is for you all as you vote. Can you honestly say that this development proposal at 286 lots on 113 acres, a density of one dwelling per .4 acres, is in harmony with the comprehensive plan's future land use map? But lastly, to the naysayers who think that the comprehensive plan is nothing but a set of guidelines and that all those community meetings and countless volunteer hours that helped form it should be swept aside, I would like to bring to your attention a case study, if you will, of the proposed subdivision of Langford Hills in 2022 and 2023. That was denied five times by the planning commission and went the distance in court withstanding several appeals. Langford Hills was unzoned land such as Owens Glen. It fell within the same character area of the comprehensive plan as Owens Glen. And the land is approximately two miles from this proposal. During those five attempts, the comprehensive plan was cited as reasoning for denial. Phrases such as "too much for the area" were used by certain members of the planning commission. Jay Rogers, a once member of this panel, stated that the planning commission could use the comprehensive plan as grounds to deny. In the end, an agreement was made between the adjacent landowner and developer to compromise on reducing the number of lots from 176 to just 91 on 163 acres. I'd say that's more in line with one dwelling per two acres that the comprehensive plan calls for. I believe that this same thing can happen. A subdivision with less density could work here. But I also believe shoehorning 286 homes where they don't belong only opens up the floodgates for more. I would ask that the three things I've stated be a guide in your decision to deny Owens Glen in its current proposal. Last time, we had three no votes. What do you say? We pick up a few more?
Are you done? I'm going to give you a few more. I can give you another minute.
I was almost done. I'd say we pick up a few more and not allow a developer with no interest in our way of life and a national home builder to overrun our roads and overcrowd our communities.
Thank you, sir. Well, there's your 10 minutes for the opposition. In favor, Mr. Harrison, and did you want this other person to go first? Ally, okay. Seba.
Yeah, you got it right. Thank you. Yes, I'm Ally Seba. I live at 232 Mohawk Drive in Greenville. But I do work for Four Star, who is the developer who is submitting this application. When I was planning to get up here and speak for this community, the first thing I thought about was talking about how this is a previously approved community where we have not changed our site plan, minus the fact that we've lost two lots. So it was approved at 288, and now we're asking for 286. The entrances are still the same. The roads are still the same. The plan is still the same. But then I thought differently because I thought, I didn't get into development because I wanted to argue on subdivision ordinances and legalities. So I thought I'd take a couple of minutes just to share a little bit of my story. We always get painted as the big, bad developer. But 11 years ago, my husband and I relocated so that we could plant a church. I was six months pregnant, and we were trying to find a place to live. We were looking for a place that we could raise our family, that we could host church meetings, and that we could afford, honestly. And so we bought a D.R. Horton townhome. And that decision to buy that townhome is what changed our lives and what was the catalyst for me getting into development because I really wanted to be a part of building neighborhoods that allowed for people to live and work in a place that they loved. I think about my friends, like Angela and Josh, who just got married and bought a home in Cambridge Creek. I think about my friend Olivia, who's pregnant, living in an apartment, and is looking to buy a home at Tanglewood Towns. And I think about the nurse who just closed on her home at Adams Glen. I also think about the 700 employees who are going to be employed at this Isuzu plant, just up the street from this community. And I hope that maybe they can find a home in Owens Glen. I think about the teacher who might want to work at Woodmont Middle or Sioux Cleveland Elementary, and they might be able to walk to work if they could live in this community. And so I just wanted to share that that's why I'm passionate about what I do, and that's why I'm invested in the approval of this neighborhood. Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. The only other person is the engineer, Mr. Harrison.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Paul Harrison, 718 Lounge Hill Road. I just, I wanted to start out with just a question that I don't know that I know the answer to. Is the comp plan, area plans, is that a part of planning commission's decision-making and ruling on a preliminary subdivision application? Is that one of the criteria? I really don't know the answer to that. I know it's mentioned a lot. I know staff makes recommendations on that. I've been used to that being a clear and defined method for rezoning applications. But I've never known that to be a clear, definitive decision-making tool for just a preliminary subdivision application. So I just, I wanted to ask that question because I was, it was a little unclear to me as to whether or not it is or not. But to elaborate a little bit more on the project, as Ally said, we really have not changed anything to the site plan. We worked with some of the neighboring properties, and they had expressed interest in preserving or keeping a small eight-acre parcel that's adjacent to existing land that they currently own. So that's where you see the carve-out along the western property line, where we're carving out those 8.21 acres. But from that, there's some other slight property changes just due to, the original application was based on GIS information, and we actually had the survey in hand. So we felt like it was important to submit the new application under that, under the new boundary. This is an unzoned property in Greenville County. There's pretty much a lot of the property, until you get to Highway 86 or Highway 25, is unzoned in this area. You control density, and you control what you can do with a property via zoning. And there's areas before that have collaborated together, property owners, to go in and rezone large areas of land. But this property's unzoned. So I stand here today with a subdivision application or revision to one previously approved. But there's a multitude of items that you could build on this site without coming before this planning commission board. And I'm sure the surrounding neighbors and community members would be highly upset with if an industrial warehouse facility came in on this property, which is currently allowed because it's in an unzoned area. And just listening to the rezoning cases earlier, there were many questions asked, what you could and couldn't do in those zoning classifications. And I remember the one case about the S1 and what you could do in S1. Look at what you can do in unzoned areas. I think that, or we feel like, a residential subdivision on this property is the most appropriate classification or most appropriate use for this property. We have, you know, we vetted everything with the TIA. We've done everything that we've been asked to do. We were hopeful that this would be a minor change. But due to the, basically, the loss of the eight acres and which caused our open space to go down some, but we're still providing 33% open space. A third of the property is in buffers, open space, and common area. So it's not like we're coming in here with a drastic change. We're moving driveway locations. We're doing this. We're doing that. We're asking for more density. We actually lost two lots. The density per acre did go up just due to the decrease in the eight acres. But for all intents purposes, this is the same exact plan that came before you before and that was approved. We feel like it's a good plan. We want to be good neighbors. Ally's done, and her team have done a lot of work in talking to some of the surrounding property owners. We've tried to buffer and, you know, take advantage of the natural features that are on the property and to buffer those areas. And we think we have a well-thought-out plan. And with that being said, I'll be glad to answer any questions that the planning commission may have.
Commissioners, any questions for the engineer?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Phillips?
Mr. Harrison.
Yes, ma'am.
Where is the existing sewer line?
The existing sewer line is off-site.
Will an easement need to be obtained through a neighboring parcel?
Not at our purview, Ms. Phillips. I apologize.
It may not be, but I'm asking questions. Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. That's what I thought. I just wanted to verify that.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Harrison.
Paul, the eight acres, plus or minus, that was removed from the original site plan, that's the seller of this property wanted to retain that. Is that correct?
Actually, that would be, the property owner right next door would retain that.
They would retain it. And it's undevelopable. Is that correct?
It was, it's hard to access for our residents. I mean, there's an existing pond on the property, and there's a creek that kind of bisects our property from that property. So it would be hard for our residents to be able to use that area as any kind of meaningful open space.
But there was nothing controversial about the property being removed from the total site plan?
No, no endanger species, no environmental issues or anything.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for the engineer? Staff, anybody?
I'm sorry, I have one more.
Go ahead.
I did not see a report from, or a response from the fire department on this application.
So the fire marshal was included in our SAC letter sent out. Sometimes we don't receive comments specifically back on applications.
Okay. Being they are listed as member, I mean, representatives on the SAC-designated list, is, do we not, is that not an established requirement? is, do we not, is that not a established requirement? I mean, I know we can't force their hands, but isn't that considered part of the requirements for the application, that we have their feedback? Yay, nay?
It's a requirement that we let them know that there's an application in their district. Whether they want to provide additional specific requirements is up to them. Sometimes they'll say something like, "No comment." Sometimes they just won't include a comment at all. A lot of times, the LDR includes fire code information in it that is already met with the plan. And also, sometimes when I see a revision, we won't see additional comments because it was, a lot of times I've heard back from some fire marshals, it may not be the case for this one, I'd have to check, but they'll say that they saw the plan already and their previous comments were there.
That makes sense, but how can we confirm that they actually received the documents?
If you'd like, you could, if you were to approve, you could make a condition of approval that, you know, a letter with their comments be included to move forward to the grading permit phase.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Harrison?
Yes, ma'am.
Did I understand that there will be a left-turning lane?
I'm glad you brought that up because I would, I'd like to talk about that. I think that was one of the SAC, SAC comments about recommend left-turn lanes onto Owens Road. This is something that we coordinated with Kurt in, in June, where the TIE didn't recommend left-turn lanes, and he verified that that was correct. So I wanted to comment on a couple of the SAC comments.
I mean, this was a previously included...
I think it was wrong, it was the wrong one, the first one, too.
The first one said North Flat Rock Road instead of Owens Road. I think Kurt may be here, I'm not sure if he's still here or not. He can probably...
Yeah, it's a recommendation, but it's not as far as the GIS.
So I've recommended as a condition of approval that, that they be required. It's up to the commission if they'd like to make that a condition of approval.
Okay.
So there's no...
So I was, I was under the impression coming into the meeting today that, per the TIE, no improvements were needed, but it sounds like that staff's recommending that as a part of the conditions to the approval. So if approved, we would have to put in the left-turn lanes.
In both directions or one direction?
Can you speak into your mic?
Are you planning to include sidewalks?
Yes, ma'am. Internally.
But not on Owens? So your sidewalks will be in the community?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Farm.
So not having those sidewalks externally, kind of make it hard to do all that walking around to the school and to these other places.
Well, the school access is out the back of the property. I was actually going to get to that, too, because that was one of the conditions from the previous approval. I don't know if you recall that, Megan, but we had talked about the, we had talked about the walking path to the school. I want to say that was a, a condition to the previous approval, was to provide a, provide a pedestrian walking path to the school property.
Yeah. It was discussed, I'm not sure if it was included as a actual condition at the end.
It was not a condition. You guys mentioned it, but when we specifically asked if you were going to do that, you didn't give a specific answer.
Yeah. I think we, I think what I stated was, we would definitely provide that access as long as it's a safe access, and we would work with the school, too, because it kind of comes in to the back of their property. What is it, what happens with that pathway once it gets to the school property? But the school property is in the very northern part. We abut the school property on the northern property line.
Okay. And my last question was in regards to the traffic study. I think I saw that it was dated a little over a year ago. How long are those valid?
So the traffic counts are to be within 12 months of, of when the application's submitted. So the application was submitted, and it was still within 12-month timeline.
Okay.
You are looking at it post the 12 months.
Okay.
But it was submitted to us prior.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Ms. Manning has a question.
The high-tension wires, is that considered to be part of the open space?
No, ma'am.
How much open space do you have at this point?
36.93 acres.
Okay.
Roughly 33 percent.
And these are all going to be attached condominiums or single families?
These are single-family detached homes.
Okay.
For sale.
All righty. And in terms of the, the situation on Owens Road, I went out to the, to the property and put a tape measure on it. Your width of the road is 15 feet 6 inches wide. I think that would probably qualify as a country road, and we're asking to have how many units possibly pounding on that road?
We're proposing a total of 286 lots.
And how many, how many traffic counts would we be looking at with that many homes?
Um...
Couple of thousand?
I mean, I...
A hundred?
I don't know how much they assume per lot. If you just go by Greenville County's assumption of 10 vehicle trips per day per single-family lot is basically what you guys consider, right? 10 vehicle trips per day per lot?
That sounds...
That's what Greenville County goes by, so, you know, you're roughly...
The difficulty that I have with this, and I've continued to have with it, is it's just too dense for the area. I've been out there, and I've looked at the farmlands, I've looked at the pasture lands, I've looked at the surrounding homes that are there, and you have crammed in 288 homes into a very, very small area. It really does concern me. And, and I'm, I'm hearing what the residents are saying, and they have every right to be saying this. It's in the middle of pristine pasture land, forests, and what have you. So I just, I, I, it's a great little development, but not here.
All right, any other questions for the engineer? I do have some issues with this development as well. I cannot support it. That's noncompliance of the county comprehensive plan. It's noncompliance of the Piedmont Community Plan. And the South Carolina law, Section 6-29-1120, "The public health, safety, economy, good order, appearance, convenience, morals, and general welfare require the harmonious, orderly, and progressive development of land within the counties of the state. In furtherance of this general intent, the regulation of land development by counties is authorized for the following purposes, among others. Number three, to assure the adequate provision of safe and convenient traffic access and circulation, both vehicular and pedestrian, in and through new land developments. And number five, to assure in general the wise and timely development of new areas and redevelopment of previously developed areas in harmony with the comprehensive plans of counties." The transportation infrastructure to safely support a subdivision of this size is just not present. So for that, for those reasons, I just can't support this subdivision.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I make a motion to deny, based on the reasons you just gave.
All righty, thank you, Mr. Farm. Can I get a second?
I'll make a second.
Mr. Wood has a second. Any further discussion?
Yes, sir, I have some further discussion.
Go right ahead, Mr. Hammond.
Well, where to start? Let's start with the comprehensive plan. And I appreciate the chairman reading us all the narrative on the comprehensive plan, and, and we can discuss that till it gets cool again. But the, you can put as much weight as you care to on it, but then you're also cherry-picking it. The comprehensive plan allows clusters of homes designed to preserve large amounts of interconnected open space. This site has 33% more open space than it's required to have. The South Greenville area plan recommends a density of two to three dwelling units per acre. Owens Glen is proposing 2.55 units per acre. So it appears that the comprehensive plans are not necessarily consistent with one another, so be careful how you wrap your arms around the comprehensive plans. Onto traffic. I've asked this question too many times, but the answer's the same. There's nobody on this commission that's a traffic engineer. Not one of you. You can, you can determine in your own personal experience, too much traffic, not enough traffic. There's nobody sitting up here qualified to evaluate traffic. There is a traffic study that's done by a qualified traffic engineer. The county had the ability to weigh in on the traffic engineer's recommendations. Staff is recommending a turn lane off, off the road, which I'll be in favor of. Be careful if you wrap your arms around traffic if you're going to deny this. We talk about sewer. Nobody tends to like septic tanks. Septic tanks are a bad word these days. We could talk about that until we got tired of talking about it as well. If we're going to develop efficiently in Greenville County and keep housing as affordable as possible, it kind of seems to make sense that we need to develop density around sewer accessibility and capacity. As Mr. Harrison pointed out, you turn this down, it's 112 acres. See, a lot of industrial uses there, concrete plants, asphalt plants, processing, and there's not going to be a single thing this commission has the first purview over unless it's got houses sitting on it. You've got the ability to have some purview over it now. I would suggest that you, that you take that. And you can, you can, for whatever reason, you think Greenville's growing too fast, you think the area's pristine, this was approved less than a year ago by this commission. Granted, this commission has different members today. It was approved less than a year ago by this commission. Staff recommended it a year ago, staff's recommending it today. We're not the experts sitting up here in planning. Those are the experts sitting here along with the rest of the county staff. The only thing that's changed in a year is the site has two less lots and about eight less acres that were undevelopable to start with. I would be really careful about your emotions leading you to a negative vote on this. I'm not going to predict what may or may not happen after this, but I sure wouldn't want to be the one that voted to deny this and have to, have to defend my denial later.
All right, thank you, Ms. Hammond. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Phillips?
I voted to deny the subdivision last time. I, I don't feel like I should vote any differently this time. I will second the motion on the floor to deny.
I thought Mr. Wood had the second.
Oh, he did.
Yeah.
So I'd like to call a vote.
Okay. All righty, all those in favor to deny?
To deny.
To deny, raise your hand. All those in opposition? It is denied seven to one. Staff, can we take a five-minute recess, please?
I owe you $2.
Recording stopped.
Has residential been slower this year? Mortgage rates primary? What's the 30-year mortgage rate?
Around 6.5.
50?
Nobody's doing 50.
I tell me about a million times. My father reminded me 10 years ago, we refinance our house, some crazy break. He goes, "My mother..."
Your mother now bought her first house in 1852?
Oh.
Said, "That went down fidelity federal downtown." Well, I don't know. I said, "You know my rate was?" I said, "What, six and a half?" He says, "Yeah, somewhere between six and somewhere between six and a half." It's historically very consistent, but nobody under the age of 40 already thought it wasn't, you know, 40 or 42, 44 or 46. Stay too low too long. We've got some...
This time the calls. You can keep calling. That, that. A little bit. Right.
Walking around, building, everybody.
No, I got that.
So many towns.
But I got...
I tell the next guy.
I always tell them.
Megan Ready, if you are.
Whoever came up with that name.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is PP 2025-112, Broadleaf Bluffs. Broadleaf Bluffs is a proposed unzoned subdivision located south of Bessie Road, which is a state road. The applicant is requesting 100 lots on 43.26 acres for a density of 2.3 units per acre. Access is provided off of Bessie Road. Here's the site outlined in red. And here is Bessie Road, looking east and looking west. Here's the site plan that was submitted in your packets. The site includes one full ingress, one emergency access, one stubout, one detention pond, a 50-foot undisturbed buffer, and 13.11 acres of open space. The site is unzoned. The subject site is part of the Greenville County Comprehensive Plan, where it is designated as suburban mixed use, where a density of 6 to 20 dwelling units per acre are recommended. Subject property is also part of the South Greenville... The subject property is part of the South Greenville Area Plan, which is designated as transitional residential. This character area type recommends a density of two to three units per acre. Additionally, the subject property is also part of the Piedmont Community Plan, where it is designated as natural land conservation and suburban. Natural land conservation recommends a density of one dwelling unit per two acres, and suburban recommends a density of one to four dwelling units per acre. Again, Broadleaf Bluffs is proposing a density of 2.31 units per acre. Here's the site and across the street from the site. And here are SAC comments that were provided at the meeting from Subdivision Administration. Any area where the 50-foot buffer cannot be achieved will require a variance request. Staff has recommended a condition of approval that I'll get to, to address this comment. From floodplain, include the following comment on the preliminary and final plans. No encroachments, including filler permitted within the floodplain unless certification with supporting technical data by an SC-registered engineer is provided to demonstrate that the encroachment will not result in an adverse impact to the floodplain. From zoning administration, please provide adjacent land uses in addition to owner info, tax number, and zoning. Call out open space areas apart from undeveloped lot areas. Need lot table showing lot number and size. Please provide average lot size. Call out sidewalk with a width of five feet. All listed items were addressed at the resubmital. And then from the South Greenville Fire District, a base layer of asphalt hydrants are to be placed at each entrance and every 500 feet to the interior. Hydrants are to be installed and operational before receiving combustible materials on site. Roadways are to be 26 inches in width, excluding shoulders, and approved apparatus turnaround when access roads are more than 150 feet per Appendix D. Access roadways are to be maintained and free construction materials, free of construction materials at all times. Temporary signage shall be installed at each street intersection. Address identification for new and existing buildings. Utilities are to be labeled to the appropriate residence. These are all to be addressed in permitting. Staff recommends conditional approval of the preliminary plan with the standard and specific requirements. Conditions of approval are as follows. One, provide a revised preliminary plan by August 1, 2025, showing how the intent of the 50-foot buffer will be achieved in the areas of the overhead power lines on site, if not feasible. A variance request submittal will be required. Two, construct a 150-foot left turn lane on Bessie Road at Access A. Three, update preliminary plan to include the following floodplain note, and it's the same note that I mentioned within the SAC comments. Mr. Chairman.
All righty. We only have nobody sign up in opposition, and we have the engineer that's in favor. And I'm going to let him speak or answer questions.
My name is William Hines. Address 201 Kristen Way, Greenville, South Carolina. I am the engineer for this project from Kimble Horn. As I mentioned, this project is located on Bessie Road in unzoned Greenville County. We are proposing 2.3 units per acre. We have worked with all utility providers at this point to work with them on what would be needed for this site and also worked through all the SAC comments that we have received at this point. Happy to answer any other questions you all may have.
Commissioners, any questions for the engineer? I've got two. The connectivity over there on the left that you cross, the undisturbed buffer, shouldn't that buffer exist until they make the connection? You see what I'm talking about?
On the left-hand side?
Yeah. That, next to the power line.
Right here.
Yeah, that white should be green, shouldn't it? That should be an undisturbed buffer until the, until time where they have to connect.
Yeah. I mean, it should be shown as a buffer unless...
We will have to provide the right-of-way to the property line, though, for the connection. So it would be within right-of-way for the future road.
Right. So when you go to cut the road, you would, you would be able to...
We'll leave it undisturbed, but I'm just saying it'll have to be put in right-of-way so that that property can connect.
Understand, for the connectivity, but I just...
It'll stay undisturbed until then.
Okay. Well, it just doesn't show it.
We can, if, we can hatch it if needed.
Get a green crayon.
Yep. Yes, sir.
The entrance, anytime the adjacent landowners are so close on a curve, what if they go out there and plant bushes? I mean, doesn't that sort of mess up the line of sight?
Yes, sir. So anytime you have a DOT road, you have to do your site triangles, as y'all have probably seen. If we are to cross into another property owner, we would have to get a site triangle easement from them, which would not allow them to plant trees, bushes, et cetera.
Oh, okay.
Over 30 inches.
Okay. Great. I forgot about that. Thank you, then. Any other questions? Motion?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion for approval of the request, subject to the conditions that Ms. Stateen read a few moments ago.
All right. Mr. Matasevic made a motion to approve with all the staff's conditions. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
All right. Mr. Wood has a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. All right.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is PP 2025-114, Walls Corner. Walls Corner is a proposed unzoned subdivision located east of Highway 101, which is a state road. The applicant is requesting six lots on 5.5 acres for a density of 1.09 units per acre. While the plan for this subdivision shows six total lots, the total number of lots cut from the original parent parcel is at least eight. No internal access is provided. Here's the site outlined in red. And here is Walls Road, looking east and looking west. Here is North Highway 101, looking north and looking west. Here is the site plan that was included in your packets. The site is unzoned and is shown in the Greenville County Comprehensive Plan as suburban edge. Suburban edges recommend a density of zero to one dwellings per acre. Walls Corner proposes a density of 1.09 units per acre. Here is the site and across the street from the site, and some additional photos of the VA 2025-110 was submitted to request a variance from the requirement to provide internal access for a major subdivision. The applicant states that the reason for this request is that the developed parcel is only five acres and was previously a part of a summary plat that had a note requiring any further subdivision of property to go through the major subdivision process. According to the applicant, the developer would like to use the existing roads, North Highway 101 and Walls Road, for access to the proposed lots. An additional variance, VA 2025-115, was submitted to request a variance from LDR 22.3.5, which requests appropriate buffering and screening. The applicant states that the reason for this request is that they are proposing just six lots and would like this subdivision to appear as a minor subdivision and only be required to meet summary plat requirements for a buffer. A third variance was also submitted. VA 2025-111 was submitted to request a variance from the final plat requirements for major subdivisions in the unzoned areas, as outlined in LDR Article 22.4. The applicant states that due to the number of lots, the developer would like to request that this be treated as a minor subdivision and go through the summary plat process instead. A fourth variance was provided as well. This is VA 2025-112, which was submitted to request a variance from the open space requirements as outlined in LDR 22.3.6. The applicant states that due to the number of lots, the developer would like to request, again, that this be treated as a minor subdivision and go through the summary plat process instead. SAC comments from Land Development. As stated in the variance request, the subdivision is a further division of land from a summary plat where three lots were created out of one 9.147-acre parcel. It is now proposed to further subdivide the larger 5.5-acre parcel into eight more lots. The original summary plat is considered part of a larger common plan by EPA and defined as incremental development by the Land Development Division. The Land Development Division does not support the creation of eight additional lots, but could support a total of six lots that would meet the definition of a minor subdivision and would allow each of the six lots to obtain individual residential LID permits. LDD has found that a small number, small number lot HOAs have problems with taking responsibility for the shared maintenance of one larger stormwater management facility. Staff recommends denial of this plan, as the plan creates more than seven, more than seven total from the parent parcel and does not meet the intent or design standards outlined in the Greenville County Land Development Regulations, Article 22 for major subdivision in an unzoned area. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Stateen. Nobody signed up in opposition. We have Ms. Gates, the engineer, or I can't read the other name.
Jackie Lanier is the other name, and that's the owner.
Okay.
But I'll, I'll start off.
All righty.
Stephanie Gates, 225 Rocky Creek Road in Greenville. I'm with Site Design. I'm the engineer and surveyor of record. Well, I'm not the surveyor of record, but my firm is. As was stated in the Land Development comment, eight lots was originally submitted for this proposal. We had eight lots. We had a detention pond, based on our PSM meeting with staff. When Judy's comment came back that they could support six lots, we dropped it to six lots, per her recommendation and comment. That's what you see today. That's what we're requesting, is the six lots. And to be treated more like a summary plat, this owner bought this land after the summary plat was done, even two lots would have to go through this process in front of this board. And staff can correct me if I'm wrong about that. I would remind you that this is an unzoned property, so as has been stated tonight, there are plenty of other uses that would not require this board's approval. So we are just looking to do some nice, larger lots with individual or possibly shared driveways and in accordance with what the county road would allow on Walls Road, and just one driveway and highway, way 101, which is a SC DOT road. So.
All right. Any questions for the engineer?
Well, yeah, I'm confused. Stephanie, the, you said six lots.
Yes.
Staff says...
I originally submitted it as eight lots.
Okay.
And then after SAC, we revised it to six lots, per Land Development's recommendation.
All right. So are we looking at six lots or more than six lots?
So the plat that Stephanie referenced, it came, this, this section came from a larger parent parcel where there were already some lots cut. So this is six, six lots that you are looking at for this section, but there are additional lots that have been cut from an original parent parcel that would typically be counted towards your overall lot count. So when we go to look at if a parcel is going to have to be a major subdivision or a minor subdivision for any area, have to go to Planning Commission, what we do is we look back through records, plats, and plats, and also real property data to 2003. The date, the deadline that we have is, is 2003. I'm actually not 100% sure why we have 2003, but that is our requirement. Anything post-2003 gets counted towards, any, any lot cuts that are below five acres get counted towards the number of lot count that you have. So if you do a summary plat in, you know, and it was 2005, and you cut off two or three acres, and then you go to cut more, that, that number gets added. You don't get a new number because it's a new summary plat whenever you come back to cut, say, three more, three more lots off, if that makes sense.
I, I think it does. So as the lots accumulate in number, the fact that Stephanie's here asking for six lots, which would be permissible or possibly recommended, the fact that there were previous lots cut out of this gets it above the number requiring a major subdivision. Is that mostly correct?
That's right. There is additionally, as Stephanie mentioned, a note that's on the previous plat stating that any additional cut would have to come before Planning Commission.
So are we, are we more or less cleaning up the summary plat?
You, you could look at it that way, but you additionally have to think about the lot count number, and that number does go over to the major subdivision amount, which in the unzoned area causes Article 22 to kick in with its design requirements.
All right. Let me ask it another way. If, if we've got these six lots shown here, and, and within that area plus a portion of another area, there were more than a total of more than seven lots, so creating a major subdivision. How, how does the seller, owner, engineer clean this six-lot area up to, to keep this from being a major subdivision? Can, can they?
I think that is a question that comes with Article 22. Since it, you know, it came in in 2020, it doesn't really have a incremental subdivision kind of allowance for it. So I think the question here is, can you submit variance requests to remove those in the event that you are doing something that looks more like a, a summary plat? Because technically, for anything that's hit that, that number, where you're, you're into the major subdivision amount, you need to meet those Article 22 guidelines, based on how the ordinance is read.
And I'm not trying to skirt the guidelines. I'm just, if there's six lots here, to me, this doesn't feel like a major subdivision. I mean, six lots is not a major subdivision to me. I'm not speaking for anybody else up here, but if, if, if we're getting drawn back to a 2003 technicality on, on some previous lots that were cut out of here, and hypothetically, we all agree, hey, six lots is not a major subdivision, can we, can we clean that up today if we want to?
Well, I'm confused.
Well, I am too, but I'm trying to be not confused.
Now, you made me...
Can I?
I have a quick question. So why don't we make it easier for the developer here? I agree with Mr. Hammond. Six lots is not a major development here. We're looking at six lots.
But you've got to be consistent.
I understand you need to be consistent, but I mean, we're making the rules, it just doesn't make any sense to me.
So what you see before you is six lots, but there were, there was a previous summary plat that would make the lot count be eight. So it does go into having more lots than...
But the developer's not asking for eight lots. The developer's asking for six, six lots.
But they have to count the eight. I want... I want to know why it doesn't, Article 22 has only to do with sewer, right?
Article 22 is the Land Development Regulation for.
Rural conservation.
For rural conservation.
But I thought that was just sewer, unzoned.
It's all of the, all of the design requirements for.
What happened to the acre and a half for unzoned septic?
There is, that section is repeated within that. I'd have to pull the ordinance.
Stephanie, how big are these lots?
They're between, they're all about three quarters of an acre, with the one might be an acre.
Okay.
It's septic. It's unzoned. What am I missing?
That's a good question.
But.
Thank you. Can I write that down?
But the one and a half acre only applies to subdivisions that are 10 or more acres. Ten or more lots. I mean, sorry, ten or more lots, sorry. Yeah, ten or more.
Oh, I thought it was anything major. Okay.
Yeah, it's 10 or more.
Okay. Thank you.
So that doesn't, so if it's 10 or more lots or 10 or more.
For the septic requirement.
Okay.
Or the one and a half acre requirement.
So we can agree that doesn't apply.
But Article 22 does apply to any major subdivision in the unzoned area.
Okay.
But we have asked for the variance for those.
Why can't you comply with Article 22?
Well, that would be a 50-foot buffer around the area on lots that were just carved out that are similar size along the road and meet similar guidelines. So.
I just, did you look through all these variances?
To be fair, I did submit for one variance to begin with to be, request to be treated like just a summary plat and not meet the Article 22, but staff required that I submit each one separately. So that's why you're seeing so many.
Sure, and that makes sense. No, I think they did the right thing, but this is.
I think I would like the owner to come up and talk to you guys for a minute, and I might come back and answer some questions, but she may have some things to say that you guys might be interested in.
All right. How much time we got?
Eight minutes, 32 seconds.
Well, she's been up there more than 10 minutes.
I was told to stop when you guys asked my shot.
Oh, good point. Thank you. No, you're right. It does.
You're saying it's not going to turn this?
For six lots. Name and address, please.
I'm Jackie Lanier. I live at 4645 Howell Road in Greer, which actually is just a couple minutes from this property. So I just want to give like a little quick background. I do live out there, and my husband and I, I raise my kids out there. They go to schools right around the corner from this property. I really care about the area. And we purchased this property from two brothers that had had it in their family for close to 40 years by the time we bought it. And it came from a much larger piece of property, I think about 35 acres. And so I guess unbeknownst to us, sometime since 2003, they had carved off other pieces and sold off to other people, but we bought this five-acre piece because it was really nice. It's close to the high school and the middle school, and there's other nice homes that have been built nearby, and it just looked like a good place to put some homes. And we later discovered that if we were going to subdivide even just one time, just to make this one five-acre, or it's actually over five acres, into two lots, we were going to have to go through major subdivision process, which for a small local builder, that's just a really big expense and hardship that you wouldn't really expect with this type of property and just trying to do a small project. So that's, you know, why we're here today, because we're kind of stuck at this point, you know? We have a bank loan we're paying on. We've been tied up for months trying to get a plan approved. We've requested all these variances at the direction of the staff and paid fees and this and that, trying to comply with everything. But if we're not able to build these homes as we had initially planned, with it being unzoned property, really the only thing I can do at this point is maybe like a group of duplexes where I don't have to subdivide, or maybe a manufactured home park. I mean, I'm not really sure what I'm going to do if I can't do the initial plan, and I just feel like with this limited number of homes and the plan that we've submitted, that hopefully you can look at the particular circumstances of just this situation and realize that maybe having it comply with major subdivision requirements isn't necessarily needed or warranted in this case, I hope.
Any questions for the owner?
How long, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
How long ago did you say you guys bought this?
It was sometime in 2024. I have to look back.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Well, it's complicated. Mr. Hammond?
Maybe a staff question, just to make sure I understand. If the application were approved along with all the variances, so the variances, if approved, bring it into compliance where they can subdivide six lots?
Yeah, they would do the summary plat process at that point.
Okay. So if we voted to approve this along with the variances, what we're approving is these six lots shown on the site plan. No more lots than that.
That's right.
Just those six lots on that five acres, is that correct? Okay, thank you.
Well, I do remember unzoned, you can put a pig slaughterhouse. I understand, and I keep hearing that. But I just, all these variances, I mean, are we not asking for a little bit too much leniency? I mean, I agree with staff. They're the experts, I keep hearing.
No, and I don't disagree with you, Mr. Chairman, but, you know, looking at this thing just on a practical level, I mean, you've got an owner who's trying to take five acres and make six lots out of it. And it, unzoned, it complies with whatever it needs to, if the summary plat were clear. The hard, if you want to boil it down, yeah, it could be an economic hardship because forcing them to go to a major subdivision is more expensive, but you're not going to end up with anything that's more palatable than what you got right here, and it's going to take you a lot more time, a lot more money to get there. You still end up with six lots. It's not going to look any different than the six lots that look here. And it just seems like if, for six lots, there's nobody here in opposition to it, the variances clean up the issue, I don't have a problem with it.
All right, Ms. Manning.
I have to agree with Mr. Hammond. This is a small builder. It's six lots. That's it. And from what I can see, they're not clustered. They're large lots. Do you want to do individual, single-family dwellings? Is that correct?
Yes.
I just think that government needs to get out of the way, and I would certainly support it.
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Phillips?
Question for staff. What's the maximum number of lots? Is it four they could add before they hit this threshold? Is that right?
For the one and a half acre requirement?
If they developed at four lots on that property, my, I haven't done the math, but they could probably get in the required buffers, and they wouldn't trigger a major subdivision. Is that correct?
With four, just four lots?
Yeah. Just say if we were, if it was reduced to the four lots, the variances wouldn't be required, and they could, everything could be done per requirements. In theory.
In theory. I would have to review a plan.
Right. I'm just to give you an answer on that one thing.
Can I speak up to that? Because two lots would require us to come here, because the plat on record has a note on it that says any further division will be considered major. Any more subdivision would be required to be here.
Was.
Any subdivision would be required to meet Article 22.
Was investigation done to make sure that wasn't maybe done in error?
We just referred back to the previous plat.
You just looked at the previous plat. Nobody did any history research?
Well, it's clear on the plat, and it's clear in the audience.
I mean, it was, it's a plat that was signed by county staff when it was recorded.
Uh-huh. I just don't, I don't see where it was all subdivided that much beforehand.
Lot number three, I mean, that lot, that thing's barely buildable because of that building line. That's the only problem I've got at the moment.
Lot three, we actually made a little bit bigger than the other ones. We made the buildable area at where the building would sit. Those lots, three through six, would face Walz Road, and I purposely spaced them out so that they had the same building length in the buildable area. Does that make sense? So it would.
Yeah, I understand what you did, but again, if they ever go widen that road, you got problems there. I just.
You got a 40-foot setback, my gosh, shouldn't have widened the road.
If you had a house there, okay.
I'm not, I'm not saying I'd live there. I'm just saying it's.
I understand. I'm just asking, I mean, I'm just throwing something out there. All right. Any other questions of these folks?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve with the variances.
I'd like a second.
All right. Mr. Hammond made a motion to approve the application along with all the variances and all staff's conditions. Ms. Manning has the second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
One quick question for staff. In the Land Development comments, it talks about, it mentions an HOA, and, you know, there's a small number lot HOA. Is there any intention of there being an HOA for this?
No, no. The mention of the HOA was on the previous eight lot that we had submitted with a pond on it, where an HOA would be required for the maintenance of a pond. That's another reason to go to the six lots, because you wouldn't want to have an HOA for six lots.
If you approve at six lots, Land Development is saying that they would prefer to do LIDs for, to handle the stormwater for each individual lot, so that an HOA or POA is not needed for shared stormwater infrastructure.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, good idea.
Thank you.
All right. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Oh, what the heck. I would have not supposed that. All against, say no. Okay. Oh, Ms. Phillips says no. It is approved, seven to one. Go ahead. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is PP 2025-51, Logan Reserve Reconsideration. PP 2020, let's see. Logan Reserve is a proposed Cluster Option 1 subdivision located north of Devonshire Road, which is a state road. The applicant is requesting 100 lots on 37.26 acres for a density of 2.68 units per acre. Access is provided off of Devonshire Road. Here's the site outlined in red, and here's Devonshire Road, looking east and looking west. Here is the site plan that was submitted in your packets. The project includes one full ingress egress point, one emergency access, five internal roads, one stub out for future connectivity, one cluster mailbox unit within a parking area that includes three parking spaces, 20-foot screening buffers around the perimeter of the site, sidewalks per the ordinance, two detention ponds, 4,791 linear feet of new public road, and 5.59 acres of open space. 5.59 acres are required. Here is the zoning of the site. The project, let's see, the subject site is part of the Greenville County Comprehensive Plan designated as suburban neighborhood. The suburban neighborhood character area type recommends a density of three to five dwelling units per acre. Again, Logan Reserve is proposing a density of 2.68 units per acre. Here is the site and across the street from the site. SAC comments provided at the meeting from subdivision administration, open space should touch a majority of lots in a meaningful proportion, as well as be as contiguous as possible. From Land Development, this proposed development is part of one original parcel owned by Edward Road Baptist Church, thus all part of a larger common plan as defined by EPA. It appears to be some type of recreation facility. As long as the church does not have plans to further divide the original parcel, we will not require a master stormwater plan for the entire parcel. This would be addressed at land development permitting phase. Staff recommends conditional approval of the plan with the standard and specific requirements. The conditions of approval are as follows. One, provide a revised preliminary plan, removing the open space hatching from portions of common area J, the detention pond, and reroute buffer outside of the detention pond. Update open space totals to reflect this revision. The revised plan must maintain required open space totals. Mr. Chairman?
All right. Thank you, ma'am. We're going to start with the opposition again. Again, 10 total minutes. Don Fowler. Name and address.
Dan Fowler, 214 Devonshire Road. As I thought about this, this property years ago was just going to be a church. Edward Road Baptist Church is going to develop on the 60-acre parcel. And due to certain financial difficulties, whatever, they decided to put it on the market and sell it. So, and so here nor there, they've put it in the plan to put two, not one, but two entrances on Devonshire Road. Anybody that knows Devonshire Road, it's a racetrack already. It's a tar and gravel road. Look at it. I go to the mailbox every day. It's in bad shape. I don't know. I think the developer did a traffic study, but did the state do a traffic study on this or not? Do y'all know?
The state?
Apparently not.
Apparently. I don't think they did, but the developer did, but said there will be one done. Okay. What we're trying to propose is to make a win-win situation out of this. And this is my proposal. They've got 37 acres on the backside of this property. If they could just move those entrances over to Hudson Road and get them off Devonshire Road, I think that might appease a lot of people. But, you know, that's here nor there. That's y'all to decide. But I think that would be a win-win for a lot of situations.
Let me ask a quick question of staff. Isn't it just one entrance and the others, the emergency access?
That's correct, I believe. Let me double check the plan.
Yeah. Yeah, that's what I'm seeing.
You're seeing one or two?
That's an emergency access only.
Yeah, that is the emergency.
There's only one entrance.
Okay. Still, I feel like that that's a lot of input for that amount of lots to come out on Devonshire Road like that with the traffic that we already have at the present time. Please consider that in your process. But let's see, I think that's about all I've got. We, the traffic study is in the process. Will that be completed before y'all? How's that work? Or will it not?
Ms. Phillips, you said something.
And while you're looking that up, Mr. Chairman, did you not ask this developer to condense and lower the size of amount of lots because of the green space that you required?
Yeah, I said they need to get rid of some lots and put more open space.
That's exactly right, and I don't see that they've done that, so.
Well, they haven't on that.
Point of information, Mr. Chairman.
I'm trying to get the traffic study.
I have, I do have. According to SAC comments in front of me, SCDOT states a TIS will be required. Contact them for scope. That's, that's after subdivision approval, I'm sure.
Yeah, and on state roads, we have no authority.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, I'm sorry, Mr.
The printed plan that we have in front of us.
We're going to discuss that later.
Okay. Because it does some differences.
Yes, it does, and we will go over that later, please.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Hugh Edmonds?
My name is Hugh Edmonds. I live at 6 Connecticut Drive in Maryfield Park. I have the same reservations about this development that I had a month ago when we met. It's been reduced, if I understand it, to 100 lots. From 100 lots to 88 lots, is that correct?
It still has 100 lots on the application.
That's what we reconsidered, 100 lots.
Yeah, the reconsideration is on the current plan of 100 lots.
Right, absolutely.
Okay, then I'm in error. I did have a plan that showed it had been reduced, however, obviously that's not, this is the exact same plan that we looked at a month ago.
Right, and that's the one we're reconsidering.
Well, we have the same reservations, it's like Yogi Berra said one time. Can you remember what he says?
Neither can he.
I'm sorry, I'm so dumb.
No!
But anyway, the emergency exit has not been closed. We still have the same number of small lots. These lots are average about 7,200 square feet. Merrifield Park, all of them are a half an acre or 20. We put three of these lots in my, on where my house and lot is now. It's not consistent with any of the neighborhoods there, and nobody is opposed to development of that land, but it should, in our opinion, it should be consistent with what's there 7,200 square foot lot's pretty small after you put a house on it and all the other areas. I agree that there will be traffic problems on Devonshire Road, there are now. If you're there in the morning, it's between 7:00 and 8:00 o'clock, traffic backs up way down Devonshire Road. Hudson Road brings everything from Greer all the way into Greenville. It's almost a nightmare in the morning, and again, in the afternoon. We have drainage problems there now, as we all can attest to, and this is not going to help that situation at all. Again, I think nobody is opposed to development. I've always thought that land would be developed sooner or later, but more consistent with the neighborhoods that are there now. So, it's what Yogi Berra said, was deja vu all over again, and that's what I think we're looking at here. We talked about this a month ago, and you folks voted it down, and I don't see anything changed since then. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. How much time we got?
Four minutes and six seconds.
Leslie Schaefer?
I'm Leslie Schaefer, and I live at 200 Parliament Road in Merrifield Park. I'm not going to repeat a lot of stuff that everybody just asked. The thing about this subdivision and the high density, that's an insult to all the neighborhoods around us that have been there for over 50 years, and like you said, we have like three-quarters of an acre lots, which people love. I mean, these are so close together, I'd be getting up and getting coffee in the morning and watching my neighbor next door take a shower. I mean, that's kind of ridiculous, but anyway, that's my main point. And then the traffic flow going through Merrifield Park as a cut-through to get to Pelham Road to miss four stoplights. That's it.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Sandy Ferry?
Farre.
Farre?
That's okay, I'm used to it. I'll bring my ferry wings to help out. My name is Sandy Farre, I live at 105 Chateau Drive in Greenville, South Carolina. I'm a proud, I've proudly called Merrifield Park home for over 18 years. I stand respectful, in respectful but firm opposition to the current Logan Reservation reserve development, the significant traffic burden that it will place on our established community and neighborhoods in Merrifield Park. Let me walk you through a scenario. A driver leaving Logan Reserve is late to an appointment. Rather than taking the longer route through four traffic lights, they will cut through from Devonshire to Connecticut to Parliament to Gateway to All-Star Way to Pelham Road. That's a 1.3-mile shortcut that bypasses four lights, reduces their drive time by 10 minutes. We all know we need 10 minutes, and it will reduce it to 2.5 minutes. While convenient and extremely convenient to those Logan Reserve people, it would send a surge of traffic through Merrifield Park, a quiet pedestrian-friendly neighborhood not designed to handle a cut-through commuter traffic. Merrifield Park is more than a collection of houses, it's a community. It's where parents walk their children to and from Pelham Road Elementary School. It's where an eight-year-old sells lemonade to raise money for a local cause. It's where our neighbors rallied around Bob, our beloved 90-plus-year-old who walks 20 miles a day and walked the final mile of his journey to symbolically circle the globe right here in our community of Merrifield Park. I join in and walk dogs with my two dogs in our community with Bob and 80 others that day. It's a sense of community that is at risk with increased traffic and density from this new development. 100 homes. This new development could introduce upwards of 200 new daily drivers to our street. Based on your own standards, that's potentially 2,000 additional vehicle trips per day in my neighborhood through a 25 mile an hour speed limit that already struggles for enforcement. In fact, I personally requested three speed studies in Merrifield Park after vehicles were recorded traveling over 60 miles an hour. Each time, speed calming measures were denied. Logan Reserve doesn't just bring homes, it brings a real safety concern for Merrifield Park. It creates new risks for every child walking to school, every senior out for their daily walk, and every neighbor simply enjoying a dog walk on our quiet streets. We're asking, we're pleading, and we're begging the county to require comprehensive and independent traffic studies on Hudson and Devonshire Roads, conducted during rush hour and when school hours are in session, not just simply based on a builder's own data. We urge council to consider that Merrifield Park was never intended to serve as a commuter cut-through. I'm a Realtor with many years of experience in Greenville County. I fully understand the need for growth. With 1,500 people, 1,500 people moving to Greenville each week, development is inevitable, and sometimes often positive. But growth must be thoughtful. It must consider existing communities, infrastructure limitations, and most of all, the safety of people who already live there. It's not just about traffic, it's about protecting a way of life, a sense of community...
Mr. Chairman, time's up.
Oh, I didn't hear the ding.
I didn't, I heard it.
Literally 30 seconds, and I'll be done.
Hurry.
The safety of the children walking to and from school. We don't want Merrifield Park become, to become just another cut-through on a GPS. I ask you please to consider the long-term impact of your decision. Pause this approval, require impartial studies, hear the voices of residents like myself, and consider how 100 new homes could permanently change the neighborhood, 200 new couples, 2,000 drive points through my neighborhood. Let's not put growth ahead of community. Thank you for your time and service.
Thank you. That concludes the opposition. Out of all these people in favor, who wants to go first? Does the applicant want to go first, or Brian Lazarus? I mean, I, I'm going to let you, do you want Evan McFarland to speak first?
I'm Brian Lazarus. I'm going to just take a second, Jeff's going to address the project. I just wanted to call and thank, not call, but I just want to thank the planning commission for the reconsideration, and just to let you all know again that we're a local builder, local developer. We've built over 2,000 homes since the late 80s and developed thousands more lots, many of them on the east side. Among those, three of them, Brighton, Caris Brook, and Tuscan Woods, are all in immediate proximity to this location. Tuscan Woods is the exact same type of development, the same sized lots, which is right down the street. All of these have been well-received and have been in service for a very long period of time. Anyhow, just wanted to thank you guys first, and I'll let Jeff address the project. Thank you.
Thank you. Name and address.
Jeff Randolph, 607 Pendleton Street, Greenville, South Carolina. Thank you, commissioners, for the opportunity to, again, discuss this application. My company, the Randolph Group TRG Communities, is working in conjunction with LS Homes, your applicant, and I'm also representing the owner of the property, Edwards Road Baptist Church. As a reminder, the church intends to retain the balance of the property, which is approximately 20 acres, utilizing that property for present uses of ministry and recreation, including the use of the recreation for residents of this proposed development. Edwards Road has always allowed others to use those fields, including East Side High School and Mitchell Roads, for the record, since it was brought up earlier. This property is not being sold due to financial difficulties of Edwards Road Baptist Church. The funds of the sales are to assist the church in the renovation of the present facility on Edwards Road. The lead pastor of the church is here tonight and available to answer that question and others. In addition, for the record, there was a traffic study already conducted under SC DOT guidelines during school hours. SC DOT approved the study. Both Devonshire Road and Hudson Road are SC DOT roads. As Brian has already said, LS Homes and TRG Communities have developed multiple communities, neighborhoods in this area. We have previously presented the plan that's before you, which is now being reconsidered. Just very quickly, that, the property consists of 37 acres. The original plan consists of a single entrance on Devonshire Road at a location dictated by SC DOT. Under existing zoning, 139 lots are allowed. The original plan indicates 100 lots. The plan indicates approximately 25% open space. Since the original consideration, we've had conversations with multiple residents along Devonshire Road to ensure safe access per SC DOT. Speeding along Devonshire, which you've heard speeding is an issue, not a volume issue, but it's a speeding issue, which I would contend that that's an obedience issue. We've learned also that those residents on Devonshire Road have to cross Devonshire Road to get their mail, which seems a little terrible. So we've agreed, working with these residents, to bring this issue to the attention of the career postmaster as part of our plans for the internal mail delivery, as well as agreed to work with the residents and SC DOT to mitigate the speeding issue through signage and other matters. While the present plan is under your review, we have submitted to staff in the county an alternate plan, which I believe you do have in front of you, for consideration. The alternate plan reduces the lot count from 100 lots to 88 lots with a density of 2.27 acres, units per acre. The alternate plan increases open space to 38%, not including the land in the water easement that runs along a portion of the property. The alternate plan indicates two large central parks, easily accessible to all residents, as well as several strategically placed pocket parks. We have also included access to the balance of the open space, as well as access to the adjoining recreational space, which is owned by the church. We appreciate your consideration, and I'm available to answer any of your questions. We do have other, I think there's several other people that are residents.
Do they want to speak? Do you want to just go straight to the plan?
I'm fine to go to the plan, and then you could talk to those residents afterwards.
Megan, you got it?
If I can reserve, I guess we still have time for those people to talk.
Five minutes, 50 seconds.
Okay.
It's up to you if you want these other speakers to speak.
Let's go ahead and answer your questions, and then we'll go from there.
All right, well, I mean, you know, we denied this because it was such a poor cluster design, and I spoke with you a while back and suggested, and made some good suggestions, and you have a different plan that I've seen, not everybody has seen.
I think, I think staff has that plan as well.
Yeah, I know, they're trying to get it, put it up there right now so everybody can see it.
While she's putting those plans up, would you like those other two people to come up and speak?
Uh, how much longer are you going to take? No, I'm just...
I want to make sure that these people do get to speak because they have sat through...
Yeah.
For some reason, we're always at the end.
Evan McFarland?
He's the pastor, he's willing to answer questions.
Melissa?
That's me.
All right, get up here.
I live in Brighton subdivision, I'm at 211 St. Minway. I have been there for 12 years. I have also lived, which is across the street, in Tuscan Woods for six years. I understand that the homes that they are building in this neighborhood are going to be exactly like Tuscan Woods, which is beautiful. They're well-maintained neighborhoods, both of ours, but the nice thing about what they're doing is the yard's already maintained, things are already taken care of, the people love their homes, they take care of their homes. You don't have to worry about depreciation of now being in Brighton, and that's going to be in my backyard, which has been lovely, having trees, but I am going to be happy to look at one of the Lazarus House's homes because they're so well-made. And, like I said, people are, maintain their homes and maintain the value of their homes. And, yes, it's great to look at the trees, that's been beautiful for the last 12 years, but that property is going to sell, and I am so thrilled that it's going to be to a local builder who is well-known in this area. It's not going to be a national builder where we're not going to know who or what is going to be in that area. So, I am totally for LS to build in that, in Logan Reserve. Thank you.
All right, Robin Newman? How much time we got now?
Four minutes, 24 seconds.
All right, I'm Robin Nutzman, I live at 205 Stedman Way, so I will be backing up to this as well. I just want to say that it's going to get built on, so I would prefer it be a local builder that is willing to work with us versus a national builder who, we have no idea who they are. It's already zoned to be able to have these homes, because it's zoned R12, so it's zoned to have houses. They're going to be houses, so I'd rather see somebody that cares about our community than somebody who's from outside who doesn't care.
Okay. Rhett Hancock?
He's with the church and can answer those same church questions if you need it.
Well, I just, I wanted to be fair to everybody who signed up. Does anybody else want to speak?
Okay, I think we're good.
All right, commissioners, this is their alternate plan. There's been two 1-acre open spaces.
Point of order, Mr. Chair.
Added, yes.
This is not the plan that's on the docket. It's not the one that we're reconsidering, is that correct?
No, we were reconsiderating the old one, but I'd asked them to add some open space for our consideration. So you can either reconsider this alternate plan, just like we had conditions...
But that's not in the docket, that's not the docket that we were handed for tonight.
Can I, could I just quickly?
Sure.
Give a little bit of history and then kind of explain kind of where this might be under what you're thinking. So, in the previous planning commission meeting, we referred back to the minutes. In that meeting, it said a, no new application, but a new drawing, an updated drawing may be provided. This is the drawing that was provided to staff. Staff did not include this in the packet because there are some changes that are different from that original application that...
It's dated today there, right?
I did that, just because...
It's dated today there, right?
Yeah, but it was submitted previously.
So, so then, we did not include that one at that time, and then this one came in today, or recently. So, I, at the chairman's request, I've included it here, but it is not something that staff has had a chance to review. If you do choose to, you know, go forward with something like this, staff's recommendation would be that you bring it to SAC and that the public gets a chance to look at it and comment on it as well.
Okay. Thank you. We approve and deny stuff adding conditions and taking away conditions all the time, and I thought there was nothing wrong with presenting an alternate plan with all the open space that I, that I think's okay. It's a pretty good open space.
Yeah, it looks better, and some of the things I've heard, it looks better.
No, but it does need to go back through the process like Ms. Stevens says.
We're fine, we wanted to make sure that the public was notified, which we did post the property as required.
Yes.
Happy to go back through the SAC. I think that clearly there's precedent that, you know, there's questions of ask of applicants all the time, are you, are you willing to reduce your lot count?
Right.
Are you willing to increase your open space? We want to make sure that...
But this is not the one we're voting on tonight.
No, we can't, if you, you can approve with the conditions...
Okay.
To utilize the alternate plan dated today's date.
How are we going to approve with conditions, not knowing what all the changes are in the plans and if they meet the requirements that we depend... plans and if they meet the requirements that we depend so well on staff to, you know?
Well, we're going to send it to SAC and to the public. So I mean, it, if you insist on it coming back to us again next month, that's fine. It's just whatever. I just wanted to show it, show what these people have been able to do, and I think it's a good cluster design, so. The only changes have been the elimination of lots, adding two open spaces, and that road to the left is full access to all the recreational facilities next door to church that these people can utilize. Sure. Ms. Manning?
So I got a chance to go out and look at the subject property, and I want to congratulate you for making the changes here. We're looking for good common sense development, and I do really appreciate the fact that you have listened to this. You've also increased the amount of open space. From what I can see, it's certainly going to be a positive addition to, to the neighborhood. Now, I hear the, the concerns of traffic, et cetera, et cetera. Is there a chance that, that this secondary road that would possibly go out to Hudson, can that maybe be extended out to Hudson? Might that possibly mitigate some of the worries that the existing residents might have?
Well, again, we have a, we have a traffic study that's already been done.
Good.
On the 100-lot subdivision.
Sure.
And that traffic study, which again, the way traffic studies work, you go to, in this case, you go to SCDOT, they tell you what to study, where to study, this intersection, that intersection, you know, whatever. You go and study that, and you submit it to SCDOT, and in this case, that study was done. It was done back when school was in session in probably March or April, and it came back and said that there was no impact.
All I'm saying, no, I fully understand about traffic studies and what have you.
So if we, and I know you do, but if we had a study at 100, we know going to 88, it's gotten better.
Right. But what I'm saying is that.
The church, the church made the decision that they wanted to keep the property on Hudson Road, and so there was no requirement, I believe staff would say, that there was no requirement to have a road stubbed into that 20 acres, but we wanted to do that for future connectivity, as well as not only pedestrian, but also vehicular.
Well, in speaking, in speaking to some of the people, the, the coordinators of some of the soccer fields that were going on, I spoke with Mark that was over there. He had probably 150 kids who were running around in thank heavens.
Probably Mark, Mark Martin.
That's right. Very nice man.
Yes.
And he was also happy to not have kids on their phones and their iPads. They were running around like the normal things that we used to do. At any rate, he had also mentioned that, that he would love to be able to have an additional road, and perhaps we might be able to accommodate that with an additional road that maybe extends that on out. I'm just making a suggestion here.
All right.
But I want to commend you as a local builder for, for listening to the planning commission because we're, we're very concerned. This is a new day here. It's, it's so important to be welcoming to the new, but also be respectful to the existing residents that are here. And I heard this, the worry of, and once again, I know it's not our purview, but it's a practical matter about having traffic and having traffic going through existing residences and what have you. That might be a way of also mitigating their concerns as well.
Yeah. I think as Edwards Road Baptist Church makes plans for that 20 acres, could you ever have a public road or private road that would connect? If, if this plan is approved, we're not required to have that stub out, but by putting that stub out there, and that stub out would be a dedicated street, then we've connect, we've created the possibility that there would be either a private or a public connection to there. Because we do have some plans that the church has done where there's some expansion of the recreational fields, which if you do that, you do need some more, you know, right now people are parking on the grass, and so we're preserving that possibility.
Good. Well, that, that's smart development. Thank you very much.
Sure.
All right. Ms. Farm, did that answer your questions, or do you have more?
To answer your question, yes, it did answer my question. I'd really rather see local developers. I mean, I'm not opposed to this development. I just think that for what we, what we've heard tonight and some of the other decisions we've made tonight, I'm concerned about it, the density level. And there's a lot going on right now with clusters as well, so that's it.
Okay.
Well, to, to the density level, you've got 37-plus acres here, and you've got, I don't know what's the amount of open space, yeah?
38%, not including that, what land is actually in the water easement, and the density is now at 2.27, 2.27 units to the acre. R-12 allows a density of 3.6.
Six.
So density allowed on the property is 3.6. We're at 2.27. We're, we're actually lower than what we were before.
If, if you, if you developed it to R-12 strictly without the cluster, you know, you're not going to get 3.6 houses per acre. But you got roads, you got other things. But what you're also not going to get, you're not going to get open space, and I can't read it, open space park 1.3 acres, open space park 1.02 acres, one, two, I see, two, two pocket parks. None of that's going to be required under a straight R-12. No.
And we would probably, we'd probably back those houses and make the lots on the water easement just bigger.
Yeah.
So you just put it in the backyard.
Do you end up with maybe a few less lots under a straight R-12? Maybe. Probably so. You know, I don't know how many. But you're not going to have any of the open space, you're not going to have any of the parks, you're not going to have any of that in R-12. And to the neighbor's point, the property's going to be developed. If you choose not to develop it as, as cluster, then that's fine. Again, the density's probably a little bit less, but you end up with a far subdivision that just doesn't have the, the character, the walkability that, that this subdivision has. And I agree with Mr. Bickle, it's a, it's a great use of the open areas as far as touching the open areas, people being able to use them. DOT, love them, hate them, do whatever, but this is a DOT road. Traffic kept, the traffic study was done, and DOT said what DOT said. Love it, hate it, that's, that's what it is. If you're, if you feel like the traffic's too, too heavy, then, then that's the deal with DOT. That's, that's not our purview. As far as, what my suggestion would be for this group would be, we look at this revised plan, if we look at the revised plan, and as a group, as a majority, we feel like it's a plan to move forward with, then whatever has to happen to SAC, if it has to go back to the public for review, whatever it may be, I would encourage that, is instead of just, okay, we're going to take the plan that was submitted, and we don't like that, and it doesn't, it doesn't pass. If, if there are specific issues with this cluster development you don't like, let's address them tonight, and if there are things that can be improved, fine. If this is, is this a plan that can move forward, great. If it is, let's move it forward. But if you just, you just say, well, we're, I'm not going to approve the other plan, and there are things I don't like about this plan, but, you know, we'll, we'll figure it out later, it's going to get developed. And it can get developed by right in R-12, and you're going to get none of the pocket parks, none of the open space, et cetera. So I, I would encourage us to be productive and open-minded and see if we can move this forward.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Hammond. Like I said, if, if you approve the alternate plan one dated of this date, since we denied the other one, then I would add the conditions of what Ms. Stanton said, that it goes back through SAC and has a public hearing, but I think they did a great job. I mean, you had two parks over an acre for each. I don't, what are, what are your other concerns?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I don't, I think the plan is very much improved, but I, I believe what is on our agenda is the reconsideration. The public, this has not been made available to the public. People are still against it and, and concerned, and if they can, we can give them another month and, and hold it, or whatever we can do to have the applicants have some discussions with these people that could still keep coming. If they, you know, they may, it's, be a lot more content, and I think it will be an overall happy, you know, every, you're not going to please everybody. I understand that. But I cannot tell you, I, I haven't had time to look at this plan.
All right. Well, how many conditions did you add to it that none of us ever saw? Like six?
I had looked at that plan. That plan did not change at the last minute.
But we, it did. There were conditions that you.
The conditions did. The plan did not change.
We had conditions all the time.
Well, if you would like to propose conditions, then, but.
No, that's fine. I, I'm, this is, if you'd like to just say, okay, let's, let's see it next month, let it go through SAC, and I'm fine with that.
Can we do that? Can it go through SAC and then come back next month?
Yes, I think you would have to condition an approval tonight with it coming through.
Yeah.
But then if it doesn't meet your specifications at the next meeting, then you would either, I'm not, that's a, that's a situation that I haven't run into.
Do you think maybe hold it?
No, I'd like for it to go through SAC. I'd like for it to go through the process. I just thought, no, we're trying, this is a little new.
I mean, if we approve it tonight, it would automatically go back to SAC and have a hearing, isn't that correct? Isn't that what we want to have happen?
If we condition it.
If we condition it?
But she wants, she wants to spend some time with it and look over it, which is fine.
But then it would ultimately come back to us.
I feel like we're trumping the process and don't want to set any kind of precedence for any future scenarios that may not be as favorable.
If I may say something, we could probably all count on one hand the number of times the chairman and I agree on anything. And I, I will, I will agree with Mr. Bickle, and, and I'm not saying you're, you're wrong, Janelle, or right, the, but one of the things that this group that I hear repeated and repeated is this group sitting here because subjectivity matters. If it were all by right, it'd just be staff approving and checking boxes, and everybody be getting their, their approval. So subjectivity matters, and this, this commission, over, over a long period of time, has a history of, of working through issues that benefit the greater public at this meeting. We have worked through a number of things at this meeting that we've made conditional, developers have agreed to change, reduce lots, add open area, do, do a number of things. So there, there's a precedent that's been set many, many times with this group. So I understand you're, you're feeling about wanting to review the plan further. I, I don't have, I don't have any issue with that. But I don't think any of us need to sit here tonight and think, well, we, we can't, we can't consider a plan that we've seen for the first time tonight. We, we can, and we've, we've made changes many times before. I don't know the best way for this to move forward, but it, we, I, I would encourage whatever that is, that it move forward and not just be, sit somewhere and be held for some indefinite period of time. If, if, if the path forward is something that can keep this moving and keep it moving in an expeditious manner, I would encourage that.
The community has.
So. Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to deny under the grounds of 11.1 and 11.3.2. And also to add from an earlier tonight, some of the, well, I won't repeat everything, it was really lengthy, but the, the Enabling Act also, but if this comes back to us and it's improved, it may go forward. It may go forward tonight, I don't know. But a month ago, or two months ago, whenever it was, it was denied under the same conditions, and it hasn't changed.
Okay. He had a motion to deny based on LDR 11, this, that, and the other, and he said the Enabling Act. Do I get a second?
I'm sorry. Megan, were you, did you have something?
Yeah, we were just going to clarify a little bit, checking, we checked in on the state law, the SE Planning Enabling Act. You can agree to hold it by mutual agreement for 60 days, and so rather than what I had suggested previously, which I would like to kind of withdraw that suggestion of, you know, approving with the condition that it comes back, because, you know, you don't want to approve something you haven't seen, you could agree with the developer to hold it, to let it go through that. But I understand there's been an additional motion made.
So it could go back through the SAC while on hold?
That's correct.
Right.
That was going to be my question. That just provides the public and us, obviously, a chance to review it in more detail than just seeing it tonight. Is that correct?
Yeah. Mr. Applicant, would you agree to a 60-day hold?
Yeah, we would agree that. We would, if we can get back through SAC and come back to the August meeting, that's what our preference would be.
Well, staff, can it go that quick?
Okay. Let me rephrase what I said. I'm going to read you directly from the ordinance, because I think I, I might have switched some words up for you. What it says is the 60-day time limit may be extended by mutual agreement. The 60-day time limit that I'm referring to is the time that it takes to, to make an, like, approval or denial, to make a decision.
Decision by state law.
Right.
I understand.
So you have an application that is submitted, it goes through SAC and then goes to Planning Commission. It has to be acted on, acted on by Planning Commission within 60 days of it being submitted. So that's why our calendar is set up the way that it is. It's on, it's running on a 60-day calendar. So in this case, what you're doing is making a mutual agreement to extend that, the 60-day.
Correct.
So.
So we could extend it for 30 days, and it could go back through the SAC and come back here to us next month.
That, yeah.
Do you see a problem or any obstacles of, I know we do variances that way going through SAC. I mean, the, the changes in the plat probably are not going to trump a, a whole lot of.
Requirement for, the requirement for the variances to get to go before that, do that one-month schedule if we ever need to use that, is that SAC be three days prior to the meeting.
Right. I know. That's the only requirement, is three days.
Yes. Some months that doesn't change, but I believe our calendar this month does support more than three days from SAC to Planning Commission.
Oh, okay.
So.
I, I, yeah, I don't think with the calendar that would be a problem. I was just making sure that.
And we can meet, we can meet those, those timeframes and deadlines. We would like to be able to come back to you in August.
Well, they can do everything. They'll do everything. We'll make it a condition.
Yeah.
But, I mean.
Yes, applicant is good with that.
Yes, yes. He needs to withdraw his, because we're not getting a second.
Yes, I withdraw my motion based on the additional information we were just given.
I mean, really, the applicant and us would agree to the 60-day extension to allow staff to go through the normal process on this alternate plan. That's all I mean, and hopefully it'll make it next month. If not, then it'll be the following month. But with the moratorium coming, this is a much better path.
Well, I'm assuming that this application remains in.
Absolutely. In my mind.
It's not a new application, it's a, it's a.
It's not a new.
Existing.
It's just, we're requesting it to go back through SAC. Do I understand that correctly?
Yeah, you do.
Okay. All right. Looking for a, a motion to hold for 60 additional days, because the reconsideration has already blown 30 of the state law, if you want to think about that.
I make a motion to hold for another.
Okay.
60 days.
With the condition that staff.
Yes.
Takes the new alternate plan number one through SAC and through public hearing. All right. Ms. Franklin has a second. Any further discussion before the. Any further discussion before the sun sets? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. All righty.
Thank you very much.
Best we could do. Variants.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is VA 2025-48, 66 Jones Street, variance for, from 10.3.5 screening and buffering requirements. The applicant is requesting a variance from LDR Section 10.3.5, which requires a 15-foot landscape buffer along the exterior property line adjacent to.
Could you all exit quietly so we can continue? Please, pretty please? Thank you.
The applicant is requesting a variance from the buffer requirements because the building was constructed prior to the buffer requirements being enacted. Here is the site outlined in red. And here's the site plan that was submitted in your packets. Here are images of the building that is existing on site. No comments were provided at SAC on this application. Staff recommends approval of the variance as requested.
All right. No one has signed up in favor and opposition. I do have one quick question. Why couldn't they run a fence from the back right corner of the property to the fence, the existing fence? Just to block all that parking away from the neighbor?
I, I think they have the fence. I see a fence on this plan that they're showing.
Really?
On the rear of the property.
I see, right. I see the fence on the rear. I'm just asking for it to come up the right property line to the back corner to block the parking from the neighbor's house.
There. There is a drainage, he's meant along the rear of the property, too.
No, I'm talking about the side.
You mean along here?
Just from the back right corner to the existing wood fence. And let us have another wood fence.
I think, I don't see, looking at the plan, any reason for that without the applicant here to speak. I wouldn't know of any reason why you couldn't include that as a condition of approval, that you'd like to see the fence.
Okay. Well, I'd like, I mean, it's a short section. It's blocking.
If we have a site photo, that would be more helpful.
A site photo.
Isn't that a site photo?
Not, not a GI, oh, that, yeah, well, that doesn't really show us what we need.
Doesn't help that, yeah.
Yeah, there. I mean, that's, there's some trees there, though.
Could go on Google and pull up street view.
Well, maybe that one you could, sometimes I can.
I have street, I have street view pulled up here, and there, at, in 2021, was when the street view was done for this property. In 2021, there used to be a fence partially along that rear property line adjacent to the property, fronting Jones Street behind this one. It appears in 2021 that fence was in pretty bad shape, not standing upright. But there was something there at one point that, and I don't think, I don't think it went the entire length, but it was kind of back in that upper, upper northern corner of the property.
All right, it's just a suggestion. I thought it would be nice for the neighbor to block the view of the parking. They'll do what you want.
While I make a motion, we approve with the requirement that a six-foot-tall chain link fence is put up on that entire property line.
You need a, you need a.
You don't want, you don't want a wooden one, they fall down.
What's the point of?
Well, you're right.
The, the wooden fence, the requirement of the fence is to be opaque, accordance to the, the buffer and screening requirements. It is to be an opaque fence.
Yeah, just an opaque fence.
I mean, unless we just want to deny, that's my motion. We'll make a motion, we approve with that condition.
With an opaque fence.
No, the opaque fence.
Can I get a second?
I'll second it.
All right, Ms. Manning's got the second. Ms. Phillips made a motion to approve this as long as they just add the fence between the back right rear corner of the property, of the building to the back fence in an opaque version. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Next one.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is VA 2025-99, 700 Executive Center Drive. The applicant is requesting a variance from LDR 10.3.7 Commercial Design Standards HVAC screening, which requires commercial uses to screen any ground, wall, or roof-mounted mechanical equipment, HVAC, emergency generators, and other accessories from public roads and adjoining residential or commercial properties. Additionally, the ordinance requires that rooftop equipment be screened by a parapet or other architectural element that is equal to the maximum elevation of the equipment and is complementary to the building's architecture. The applicant states that the building, that Building 700 is similar to all other buildings at the Park 37 Office Campus in that no HVAC roof equipment is provided with screening beyond the parapet walls and that the existing HVAC roof equipment height of 93 inches is greater than the parapet height of 41 inches. The applicant also states that the proposed new HVAC roof equipment height, up to 80 inches, is less than or equal to the existing HVAC roof, roof equipment heights, which is up to 93 inches. Here's the site outlined in red. And here is an image showing the location of, of the equipment on the roof of Building 400 that's existing. This is Building 750 showing that, that same view for those buildings in the park, or that building in the park. Here is an image of the building. No comments were provided at subdivision advisory committee on this application. Staff recommends approval of the variance as requested.
All right, nobody signed up for this one either?
I am here, so I didn't sign up for it.
Oh, sorry. Well, I'm, I'm sorry you can't speak.
I'll do it.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the application.
I'll second that.
And it could add a condition that, that we never see another buffer variance application again the rest of, the rest of time on earth.
Well, if you saw the front of that building, you can't see any of the units up there.
And, and.
We're trying to fix that with.
Yeah.
That starts somewhere.
And I imagine staff would probably like for that to go away to.
Ms. Hammond made a motion to approve. Mr. Wood has a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. See, you didn't need to speak. Loom Street, we do have somebody. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is VA 2025-110, 14 Loom Street, Section 812 right-of-way variance. The applicant is requesting a variance from LDR Section 8.12, which requires that any subdivision accessing a county road and/or having lots adjacent to county roads accommodate a 25-foot right-of-way from the center line of, of the county roadway for future projects, regardless of existing right-of-way. The applicant is requesting this variance in order to be able to finalize a summary plot process that would allow for each of the existing structures to be on individual lots. Currently, the site has multiple existing non-conforming structures on one single-family zoned lot. As part of this, as part of the summary plot process includes dedicating a 25-foot right-of-way from the center line of a county roadway for future projects, the applicant states that accommodating the 25-foot setback would put the existing houses, several of which are currently occupied, into the 20-foot required setback for the site. Here's the site outlined in red. Here is the summary plot application, showing how the lot lines are, are going to be on site when, when it gets completed. Here are some images of the site in Loom Street. Some additional images of the site. There were no applicable SAC comments for this case. I will mention that I did speak with Roads and Bridges, and they are, they're okay with the right-of-way variance application. Staff recommends approval of the variance as requested. Mr. Chairman?
We have one person in favor, Peter, Pete Bauer.
Mr. Bauer, if, if we agree to approve this right now, would you not say anything?
I'm, I'm sorry. I should have brought sandwiches for everybody.
I need a bucket.
Yeah, we need drinks.
Well, no, I need a bucket. That's what I need.
If you could, you understand what I'm trying to do.
Yeah. You going to make a motion?
We're good. I'd like to make a motion, we approve the application.
I'll second.
Let's go.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Phillips, wait a minute, we got to vote.
I was going to ask the applicant if there was, if, if there was any of that 25 feet that he could allot to road frontage at all, or if you really do need all that.
I'd have to look at that again. I believe there is some that we could allot to that. I could go through that and figure out where that 20-foot setback is and, you know, and agree to that. On Loom Street, if we could go back to that, Loom Street, which is a, it's almost an alley. It's very, very small.
My, my thinking is this. The reason they, they implemented that is for future road improvements, maybe, maybe some kind of grant that puts sidewalks in, so they don't, I mean, if there's a house there or a structure, they can't do anything. But am I right, Kurt, in that explanation?
Right. I think what he's saying is, no, that right-of-way, you put those structures.
There is just possibly, it, it's too close, because it isn't, I mean, I, I can see it is.
It's a very old neighborhood.
Maybe a one-way, if you're lucky.
If you're lucky.
Okay. All right. I was just, I was just asking. So motion second, do we want to vote?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Have a nice day. Mr. Carlisle, 10-second planning report.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I'll keep this brief. So we're currently working on putting together a workshop to introduce the open space plan and the five-year comp plan update to you all. We're looking to do that next month. So with the idea of bringing it to you for review and approval in September, is there a date that works best for all of you? I was going to call for dates, but if you want to just email me and give me your availability, we can work on scheduling that. I want to have our long-range planning staff available to, to introduce it to you and answer your questions.
First week.
Okay. Well, I was thinking the middle of the month, so just let me know what works.
What time of day?
Whatever's flexible for you, we can.
I was going to say, we could probably make that happen.
We're going to Friday afternoon, nobody's here on Friday afternoon.
No. All right. One thing I wanted to, one thing I want to point out as we get ready to go into this moratorium on cluster developments is that, like Megan talked about earlier, we run on a 60-day calendar. And so the application deadline for the September meeting was today, so before the moratorium goes into effect. So you'll be seeing potentially any applications for cluster developments up through about September or so. So even though the moratorium will be in effect starting the end of next week, we still have a couple of months of, of review of cluster developments before it's paused. Just wanted you to have that expectation set.
So possibly what, October, we wouldn't see cluster? November, we wouldn't see?
Unless we implement a new cluster or it's by them, and I just.
Right. At that point, it just depends on the timing of when and how council acts, but is, assuming it goes the nine months, the 12 months, that'll be about the time, be around the holidays.
October, possibly, no, but.
Correct. Correct. And then lastly, just wanted to say we have a new member of staff. Rohit Nimje has joined us as a new planner, too, and urban designer in our, with our long-range team, and we're very excited to have him on board.
And I have one thing. As you can see, Kelsey is not here tonight. She had her baby last week. She is healthy, baby is healthy, and everything's great, so.
Oh, that's great. That's a good planning report.
The open, open space plan still has the two members of county council, the city council.
It's been changed.
Not the one I saw yesterday.
It's been changed in the main document.
Well, how did you see it? No one else has.
Because I'm on the committee. Excuse me.
And I want to say thanks for sending us the org chart.
My pleasure. My pleasure about that.
We're glad our chairman's good for something.
I will say, Josh is, his title of deputy planning director was left off there. I apologize for that. That has been corrected and will be out in a new version, so.
My title's still wrong in the open space plan, but that's okay. He wants to quickly ask about the five-year comp plan. What's the status of that? Do we get to see it anytime soon?
I think, I think y'all just covered that as far as.
Yeah, that'll be, that'll be coming with that workshop.
Was that the M?
Well, we wanted to introduce both to you.
They're two different.
My conversation I had today is that we'd introduce both to you at this, at this workshop.
Okay.
At the same time?
Unless you want to do two separate ones.
So the five-year update is what is included?
Correct. Both.
All right. Impact study. Council has passed a resolution that has charged us with doing the impact study. Well, what? Can I finish?
Keep going.
Jesus. If you knew how bad I had to pee. Well, see, there, you see what I put up with. With discussions with Chairman Blount and some others, I would like to recommend doing the feasibility study instead of the full study. The resolution has a sentence in there that would allow us to vote and allow them to do the feasibility study, which is $6,000 to $7,000. It would answer a lot of questions of the counselors that weren't real thrilled with this at the meeting that most of us attended. I spoke with the gentleman this afternoon. He explained it. He would interview all the different areas and come back to us with a recommendation on what areas, meaning parks and rec, transportation, fire, police, schools. But they will do a recommendation, which would inevitably save us money, because if we do a full study with all of the categories, then that's, that's mega bucks. So did all this make any sense?
Absolutely. Exactly.
I'm surprised.
So the feasibility is smaller.
Very small. He comes down here by himself. He interviews everybody, and it's a lot quicker way of getting some more information and hopefully answer.
Are we limited to those? Could we add one or two? If there's a really good one, we didn't have.
Well, he's.
What if we didn't want to include all that? Take one out.
The feasibility study will do all of them, and then we can pick and choose for the big study. That's another reason why I would like to recommend the feasibility study and to get this thing rolling. So we would need a motion to ask staff to do RFQs. We need three bids for a feasibility study for the impact study for Greenville County. Is that okay?
I'll do the motion. I'll do the motion.